Okay, we'll call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education of Community High School District 128 for Monday, November 9. If I could ask everybody to please recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Groody.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, all board members are present tonight. On the agenda, we will open it up for public comment. I understand we have about thirteen letters to read tonight. Then we'll open it up to our school board representatives, student school board representatives. We'll have a superintendent's report, which will cover a number of items, including school report cards, the status of basketball, updates on capital projects, and where we're at with school reopening. We'll then approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed last week, and have updates on program and personnel and facilities and finance. Jim, I assume you were going to talk about IASB tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And then anything from SEDOL, Karen?
No.
Okay. And we will convene an executive session again this evening. The topic is employment of an employee five ILCS 120/2C1. We will not take any action after that executive session tonight. So we'll just return to open session to adjourn the meeting tonight. All right, anything else? Okay, let's open it up for public comment.
Dr. Groody, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Any reference? I know we have a lot of public comment things to read in. It looked to me like at least two were pretty much word-for-word identical. Do we have to read both of them, or are we planning to read both of them?
Uh, Mary, you want to?
Pat Groody, President.
Are they, is it a form letter with two different people?
Yes.
There are two that looked very similar.
Is there anything? A lot of times those form letters in the middle, they put their own paragraphs in.
I did not see anything different, but I just looked at them quickly.
Jim Batson, Vice President.
I was just curious.
I know, that's a fair question.
Yeah, more out of a curiosity.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
They are slightly different. Like you said, they start out similar, and then one has bullet points.
All right, let's read them.
Okay.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
Hey, the first letter is from Lynn Lenz. Dear Board Members, I am writing to ask that you vote yes on Resolution Two. All of my children attended LHS, and I'm still a concerned community member. Specifically, I'm concerned about preventing the youth gun deaths. The stress our kids are under, and the rising incidence of youth suicide, and the fact that there has been a huge rise in gun ownership is a scary combination. Unsecured gun info. Before COVID-19, 4.6 million kids lived in a home with a loaded unlocked gun. Unprecedented surge in gun sales, 500% in FOID applications in Illinois since the spring, means that number is now even higher. Forty-one percent of teens in gun-owning homes report having easy access to their parents' gun. Fewer than half the gun owners report storing their guns securely. Suicide info. One in four teens have contemplated suicide. Suicide is second-leading cause of death for teens. Six hundred children per year die from firearm suicide, and that number has been rising. Youth suicide survivor reports spending an average of less than twenty minutes deliberating before they made their attempt. Guns are the most lethal method of suicide. Ninety percent fatality rate with firearm suicide. All other methods of suicide average a 4% fatality rate. Almost half the youth suicides involve a gun. Eighty percent of children who died by firearm suicide used a gun belonging to a family member, most often their parent. Restricting youth gun access can mean the difference between a child surviving a suicide attempt to get the help they need or not surviving the attempt. Ninety percent of people who attempt suicide will never make a second attempt. Secure storage of all guns reduces the risk of suicide death by seventy-eight percent. I know you voted in favor of Resolution Two last week. Please keep your vote as it stands, and have your delegate take that vote to the IASB meeting later this month. Thank you.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
The next message is from Mary Jane and Andy Wang. Dear Board Members, we understand the IASB delegate feels that Resolution Two asks the IASB to step outside their lane in supporting strengthening the state's safe gun storage law. However, a different perspective to consider is that it is in your lane because your school board is subject to many underfunded state mandates that directly relate to this specific issue. We are simply suggesting that you ask those legislators who put those mandates on you to share in that responsibility and meet you halfway by also doing their part to keep kids safe. The data from the U.S. Secret Service analysis of all previous school shootings is clear. The vast majority of active school shootings have been carried out by a student from a school who was under eighteen. The Secret Service data has also shown that the vast majority of school shooters have had guns belonging to a family member or friend. Logic tells us that helping to prevent unsupervised youth access to firearms in the home would prevent a vast majority of school shootings by halting unsupervised student access to the weapons. But instead of acting accordingly, Springfield has failed to strengthen the safe storage law. Instead, Springfield has put underfunded mandates on you, the school districts, requiring that you spend your budgets, hardening your buildings against shooters, running active shooter drills, hiring SROs, and paying for staff training. According to Superintendent Lee, the board has invested over $4 million in security-related upgrades to LHS and VHS over the past three years. If the legislature in Springfield can mandate that school boards use their budget for those things in response to school shootings, then you, as a school district, should expect the state to do their part and meet you halfway by strengthening the law to protect our students in high school. You are also mandated by the state to provide suicide prevention resources. Anne-Marie's Law was created to provide suicide awareness and prevention to Illinois school students and school staff. This law requires ISBE to develop a suicide prevention policy and also requires school districts to adopt suicide prevention policies and procedures. Again, the state legislature puts demands on you as a school district to use your financial and staffing resources to address issues like suicide. You, as a school board, can and should ask them to do their part as well. It is definitely not outside your lane. The obvious and more compelling argument to make here is that strengthening this already existing law will no doubt save students' lives. Nobody wants to be standing around after, God forbid, one of these tragedies happens here, wondering if there was something more we could have done to protect a student or students in our district. Nobody wants to look any child's mother or father in the eye and have to explain to them why you didn't do this when you had the chance. I promise you, your reasons for hesitating now will seem grossly insufficient in that moment. Why do we need to get involved in this? Well, if not you, then who is going to put your students' safety first? The Illinois Legislature is motivated in part by big money from the NRA, who will revoke their money and support from representatives who vote for strengthening the safe storage laws. I've been told this very thing straight from Illinois Senator McConaughey, who told me that he approves of this, but explained that he cannot vote for it without losing his NRA endorsement, which would cost him his voting base. By supporting Resolution Two, you would be joining districts like Libertyville District 70, Mundaline D-76, Barrington 220, and Naperville's 203 and 204, who have unanimously voted yes. You have a chance to stand up for our children now, and I hope you take it. Our kids are looking to you to keep them safe.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
The next letter is from Lisa Black. I am writing once more to urge you to vote for IASB Resolution Two that raises the safe storage age requirements for firearms from fourteen to eighteen. This resolution could save lives. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for teenagers. Eighty percent of whom die by firearm suicide used a gun belonging to a parent or family member. Safe storage of firearms can also deter school shootings. Data from previous school shootings show most active school shootings were committed by a student from the school, and eighty percent of the school shooters use guns from their homes or the home of friends or family. Secure firearm storage would prevent the vast majority of school shootings by interrupting a minor's access to a gun in the first place. Kids are impulsive, and their brains are not fully developed until closer to age twenty-five. Please do not wait until after a tragedy happens to act to protect our kids.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
The next message is from Heather Sherwin. School Board Members, I am writing as a concerned parent with a student in the district to ask that you support IASB Resolution Two. The data regarding both youth suicide deaths and also school shootings clearly indicate that students' lives could be saved by strengthening the existing safe gun storage law. You have an opportunity to stand on the right side of the issue. Our students are looking to you, the adults in a position to protect them, to keep them safe. I hope you will put their safety first by voting to support Resolution Two.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
Message is from Chuck Greskovich. Board Members, I am writing that you vote yes for Resolution Two because I am a parent in the district and am concerned about the safety of children in our community. Almost eighty percent of active school shooters have had a connection to the school, and most are students or former students. Eighty percent of active shooters used guns they obtained from their home or their homes of friends or family. Since active shooters are most often current or former students, they have participated in the school's active shooter drill and already know where and how everyone will hide. Kids under eighteen, age of most of our students, cannot legally purchase firearms. They depend on access to a parent, family member, or friend's guns to carry out their plan. Secure storage would halt a would-be school shooter's access to a loaded unlocked gun, therefore preventing many school shootings from ever happening. Please vote to support Resolution Two to help keep our kids safer.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
This message is from Dale Sherman. Board Members, it is unclear from the agenda whether there will be a final affirmation tonight of the previous vote to commence a hybrid learning model. Should there be any additional voting or affirmation tonight, I encourage the board to make no changes. We have come so far in this long ordeal, and the hybrid model was a positive step in the right direction. Hybrid is a grand bargain that affords choice to students and parents while also addressing the safety concerns raised by some of our outstanding teachers. It is a short step. We'll be in hybrid for just a few weeks, then adjourn for winter break. But it is a crucial step whose timing cannot be pushed back without adverse consequences. For those who might seek to persuade you to stay remote, I must inquire, what is their plan? What is the specific plan of the remote learning advocates? What timeline do they propose? What specific actions do they recommend? The answer to all is invariably that they have no plans, no specifics, no directions. The proponents of perpetual remote-for-all status have not met the burden of persuasion. Hybrid is a compromise that at least partially serves the interests of all constituents. No other plan does that. Please do not regress tonight. Please continue to focus on the students and what is best for them. Please stick with the hybrid plan.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
This message is from Jennifer Rich. School Board, as parents, I think we all envision a future where our children's biggest worry at school is getting an A on a test or a hit in the big game. The goal requires all of us in the community to work toward common sense solutions to gun safety. Schools should not bear an oversized burden of preventing gun violence in their halls and among their students. Yet, that is what legislators in Springfield are forcing schools to do by leaving a huge loophole in the state's safe gun storage laws. I am writing today to ask the board to vote yes on IASB Resolution Two. Resolution Two would commit the IASB to advocate for a stronger gun storage law, one that would require households with children under eighteen to lock up their guns safely. Currently, Illinois safe storage legislation applies only to households with children up to age fourteen, which leaves a huge safety gap that schools are ultimately forced to contend with on their own. Research shows that as many as seventy-four percent of school shooters under the age of eighteen obtain the weapon from their own home or from homes of a relative. Shutting down minors' access to firearms is a simple and effective way to prevent school gun violence, one that puts the burden on legislators and family, not schools. I, for one, can't wait for the day when we have school board debates about how to make our schools softer rather than harder. Please vote to support Resolution Two, and let's get there together.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
And this message is from Dr. Kathleen Dorn. I will be brief, since I expect you will have many letters today. I'm a concerned D-128 parent and community member. My child has chosen to stay remote because they think that is safest. Thank you for that choice. However, as the positivity numbers in the community continue to rise and our hospitals get overwhelmed, I would expect the school board to review and reconsider the safety of opening with an in-person option, not only for the students, but for the faculty and staff as well as the larger community. COVID-19 rates are the highest in Lake County since early July, and she includes some graphs in this letter as well. A return to indoors due to the weather as a whole may only see an increase in cases. While the data in children under twelve is very promising for COVID-19, those in high school age are more like adults. The CDC recently released a study on the incidence and spread in children that showed an increase in risk in the older child. COVID-19 trends among school-aged children, United States, March 1 to September 19. A quote from an expert, "The new study adds to a body of evidence suggesting that older teenagers in high school and college are more likely to be infected and more likely to transmit the coronavirus than our children under the age of ten," said Dr. Muug Sevic, an infectious disease expert at the University of St. Andrews. "Thank you for your hard work on this topic and others. I appreciate your consideration in revisiting whether opening in-person classroom teaching will detrimentally affect our community." This message is from Glenn Janzen. Hard-working members of the D-128 Board, as a community member and a parent of an incoming freshman, I would like to urge you to continue to focus district resources on the most sustainable and responsible course. At this time, with community transmission in our area at extremely concerning and dangerous levels, returning students and staff to any kind of in-person learning should not be the priority. Though data is unclear on the role schools play in community outbreaks and mitigation efforts may prevent some spread, it is clear that all of the necessary mitigation will put a significant strain on our schools. This will affect our school's ability to meet student needs now and into the future. The remote model is certainly challenging and at times frustrating for teachers, students, and parents alike. But I believe our district would best serve our community's needs by focusing its time and resources on supporting the remote model until local metrics indicate a return to in-person learning is feasible and responsible. Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication as you continue to strive to make the best decisions for our community.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
This message is from Sarah and Alec, I'm sorry, Sarah and Alex Niznik, members of the school board. We are writing today to ask the board to support IASB Resolution Two for safe gun storage. Currently, Illinois safe gun storage laws apply to children up to age fourteen, but should be raised to eighteen. With increasing instances of youth suicide, unintentional firearm shooting in the home, and school shootings, this current legislation falls tragically short in protecting our children in schools. With more children home than ever before, along with a tremendous increase in firearm sales, we need to make sure minors don't have access to guns. As Resolution Two states, the majority of school shooters have a connection to the school, and as many as seventy-four percent of shooters under the age of eighteen obtain their weapon from their home or the home of a relative. Reducing and removing youth access to firearms is a simple and effective way to prevent school violence. I want to address concerns that this resolution calls schools to act outside their lane. That simply isn't true. Schools are responsible for the safety of students when the students are in their buildings. Schools have been pushed into this lane by having to harden their buildings and invest in school resource officers. Schools are in this lane when they are required to perform school shooter drills. Let's be proactive and prevent a shooter from entering the school in the first place by halting access to a firearm. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for youth between the ages of ten and twenty-four, and the rates are now at an all-time high. School districts have an important role to play in preventing youth suicide and raising awareness of this issue. Data shows that most people who attempt suicide do not die unless they use a gun. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the Illinois chapter of the AAP support safe gun storage. Please let me know if you would like me to provide you supportive links and letters that demonstrate their viewpoint. Like educators, doctors were told gun violence was not in their lane. Their response has been bold and clear. It is their lane. It is yours as well. Please vote in support of Resolution Two.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
And this message comes from Deborah Kirk. Board Members, I am a Libertyville resident. I have a child who attends a school that feeds into D-128. As a member of your community affected by the decisions that are made by you in the midst of a pandemic, I wish to state my displeasure that our schools are making a decision to move forward on hybrid during a time when health experts are warning against it. The CDC says we are at moderate risk of in-school transmission. The LCHD recommends remote. In your own document titled COVID-19 Confirmed Cases and Exposures Reported to Community High School District 128 as of 10/26/2020, U-State, District 128 is following guidance from the Illinois Department of Public Health, the Lake County Health Department, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for best practices and procedures to protect everyone's health. And what would prompt District 128 to close LHS and VHS? The Lake County Health Department will work with District 128 administrators to determine if a school should close. This does not seem to be the case. Please heed the advice of the CDC and the LCHD and go remote until LCHD metrics indicate it is safe to pursue hybrid. Please consider your decisions and how they impact the safety of our entire community.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
This message is from Randall and Leah Roman. Dr. Kalentis, Superintendent Prentice, and the Board. This is an updated version of a letter I sent to Dr. Kalentis on November 4th with more recent numbers. With dismay, we received an email indicating the plan to return to hybrid learning was continuing. Back in October, it was determined that with the increase of both the positivity rate and the seven-day moving average in the district and Lake County, the return to hybrid learning would be delayed from October 29th to November 12th. With now three days to go before the anticipated return, the seven-day moving new case average for Lake County is now forty-four per one hundred thousand. The values for the 60048 and 60060 ZIP codes are at thirty-one point nine. These figures far exceed the Lake County Health Department recommendation that students work remotely when the new case average exceeds fourteen per one hundred thousand. Under these conditions, how is it safe to return to hybrid learning when it was not safe in October when the case average was much lower? We understand you are under a great amount of pressure to return students to school. The public statements read aloud at the October emergency meeting call indicated that there are many members of the public who seem to have no problem risking the health of others because children don't get sick. We believe this is a mistake. Returning students to school at a time when the transmission rate is increasing would be irresponsible. Given the rise in the new case average in the area, plus the cases related to the various sports teams, it is clear that methods to control the spread of COVID among students and the general population are not working. Reopening the schools, even with the decreased attendance of the hybrid model, would put at risk the health of students, their families, and the faculty and staff of the schools. At this point, we urge the school district to delay the return to hybrid learning until the statistics indicate that the spread of COVID has been brought down to a level that the Health Department considers safe for return to hybrid learning.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
And the last letter is from Dr. Kristen Cresswell Isberg. Superintendent Lee, Board of Education, Dr. Kalentis, and Dr. Gilliam. Once again, we are on the precipice of opening the schools to in-person learning via a hybrid model. We are also on the precipice with regards to the coronavirus in this country, in this state, and in this county. Metrics don't lie, and infection rates are increasing at an alarming rate. We are currently in the worst position than at any point during this pandemic. Current metrics for our area indicate that we should remain in virtual learning, yet for some reason, we are ignoring the metrics and moving full steam ahead. New evidence released this past week by the IDPH show that schools represent the third-largest exposure location for SARS-CoV-2 infection in Illinois and six in Region Nine. Considering that a large portion of schools are currently in virtual learning in our region, I expect our area to mirror state statistics once our school opens. A new study released November 6th on the CDC website concluded the following. These findings suggest the transmission of SARS-CoV-2 within households is high, occurs quickly, and can originate from both children and adults. It has been established that children, even young children, get infected with coronavirus. Illinois IDPH contact tracing data indicates that schools are a significant source of exposure. This new study released by the CDC highlights that children can be the originators of infection within the home or family unit. If we open our doors to in-person learning when infection rates are higher than what was previously determined to be an acceptable level, we are contributing to the spread of this virus not only in our homes but throughout our community. The disruption to learning lives and health is unacceptable. We are on the precipice, and we have a choice. The responsible choice is to continue with virtual learning for now and promote community adherence to mitigation strategies so we could all finally get to the point where positivity rates are low enough that we can safely and responsibly reopen our doors. Thank you.
Okay, that's it, Mary?
Yes.
Hey, Pat, before we go on, we received one letter to be read, but it came in fifty minutes, five zero, after the deadline, and so I just wanted to bring that to your attention and leave it up to you and the board of whether you actually want that read into the record.
I'm fine with reading it.
Pat Groody, President.
I don't want to set a terrible precedent here, but if it's only one, I'm actually okay with reading it.
Okay.
Anybody opposed?
Pat Groody, President.
Okay. I'd rather err on the, I'd rather err on the side of being inclusive here, I think.
Okay. The last letter is from Rebecca Snyder.
Mary Toddrick, Communications.
Who says, "Members of the board, I am writing today to ask the board to support IASB Resolution Two for safe gun storage. Currently, Illinois state's safe storage law applies to children up to the age of fourteen, but should be raised to eighteen. With increasing incidence of youth suicide, unintentional firearm shootings in the home, and school shootings, this..." this current legislation falls tragically short of protecting our children in schools. With more children home than ever before, along with a tremendous increase of firearm sales, we need to make sure that minors do not have access to guns. As Resolution Two states, the majority of school shooters have a connection to the school, and as many as seventy-four percent of the shooters under the age of eighteen obtain the weapons from their own home or the home of a relative. Reducing or removing youth access to firearms is simply an effective way to prevent school shootings. I want to address concerns that this resolution calls schools to act outside their lane. That simply is not true. Schools are responsible for the safety of students when the students are in their buildings. Schools have been pushed into this lane by having to harden their buildings and invest in school resource officers. Schools are in this lane when they are required to perform school shooter drills. Let's be proactive and prevent a shooter from entering the school in the first place by halting access to firearms. Suicide is the second leading cause of death for youth between ages ten and twenty-four, and the rates are now at an all-time high. School districts have an important role to play in preventing youth suicide and raising awareness of this issue. Data shows us that most people who attempt suicide do not die unless they use a gun. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the Illinois Chapter of the AAP support safe gun storage. Please let me know if you would like me to provide more supportive links and letters that demonstrate their viewpoint. Like educators, doctors were told gun violence was not in their lane. Their response has been bold and clear. It is now in their lane, and it is yours as well. Please vote to support Resolution Two.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
All right. See, how about update from our student school board reps? Who would like to go first?
Kayla, do you want me to go?
Sure, you can go.
Student rap.
Okay. On November fifth, Dr. Kay, Mr. Stevens, Nurse Trout, and Nurse Wasserman hosted two webinars for hybrid kits. The kids attended the webinar based on their assigned group. This webinar was very helpful in understanding how a hybrid day would look like, materials needed, safety precautions, and other important information. Parking for seniors and juniors was also discussed. On Friday, November sixth, Dr. Kay signed up the hybrid safety video as well as safety contract via email. It's important for hybrid students to watch this video and sign the form acknowledging that they watched the video. I urge all students to watch it as soon as possible. This video provides firsthand insight of a hybrid school day as well as every safety precaution that will be taken. This past Saturday, Model UN had their first virtual conference with approximately six hundred fifty students in attendance. The conference was run by St. Ignatius students. Their process was a Google form that consisted of a Zoom link for each committee along with the opening and closing ceremonies. Within the committee, they worked together via Zoom and a shared Google Doc to work together on their assigned project. Congrats to Pavan Acharya on winning Best Delegate, Jasmine Lafita on winning Outstanding Delegate, and Emma Black and Fatima Elman Shawi on Honorable Delegate. The month of November is surf season. Student Council is hosting one of the biggest events of the year, the canned food drive. This year, due to COVID, the need for canned foods and non-perishable items have increased. As Wildcats, it is our duty to give back to our own community members. The first Blitz Day was held on November seventh where Student Council and Partnering Club members picked up cans from houses who signed up to be a part of the food drive. Within four hours, they collected eighteen hundred cans. There'll be another Blitz Day this Saturday. The Google form was sent to all students and parents. Parents are being asked to either leave cans at their doors and LHS kids will pick them up or can either drop off their cans at the food pantry. The web store is also open for monetary donations that go towards the Libertyville Township. We hope that we can all unite during these unprecedented times as a community and give back to other communities. Seniors, congrats to those of you who had to finish your November first college applications. I'm so happy to see all seniors coming together to help each other out, to help each other throughout this whole entire process. A huge shout out to Ms. Belstra and Ms. Cardenell for their hard and valiant efforts and always being there for the seniors. Whether that be on Zoom, whether that be on a Zoom call every day or calming down anxious seniors, it meant a lot to all of us. The next big deadline for applications is January first, so that will be another round of applications. So perhaps you're wondering how the COVID pandemic is impacting college application process. Many students are applying to more schools due to hesitation about the changing requirements and not being able to tour schools. Many schools have also gone test optional. During the midst of the pandemic, the SAT and ACT were put on pause after many testing sites filled up rapidly and some even canceled their tests a week before. Because of this, many students were unable to obtain a test score for the college application process. So personally, my October and September SAT were canceled two weeks before the day I was supposed to take them. So due to this, I was dependent on the school-issued one. Almost all colleges won test optional where students had the option to submit a test score or not. This is a huge step in the college application process because of how unpopular the SAT and ACT the SAT and ACT have been throughout the years as they are not a good representation of the students' abilities. I'm thankful for colleges and being super understanding throughout this whole process. For athletics, the cross-country season is over. The team placed sixth and therefore qualified for state for the first time since nineteen ninety-two. While the top seven teams in sectionals qualify for the state typically, state was not held this year. Fall college signing day is this Wednesday, November eleventh. Congratulations to all the athletes on signing to play at the college level. Athletes are allowed to bring immediate family and their head coach to the celebration. Dr. Nelson will be hosting the first Green Dot Bystander Training Event of the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one school year this Wednesday. Green Dot is our LHS program to event bullying, harassment, interpersonal violence. The last Green Dot Bystander Training Event was March eleventh, the very last District one twenty-eight field trip before we headed to e-learning last spring. I'm so excited to see this initiative continue so that many more people can experience and be able to learn so many amazing things about our Green Dot program.
Student Representative School Board. Student Representative School Board.
Who would like to go next?
Kayla.
I will go. Okay. Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week was a week dedicated to drug prevention at VHS. Each day last week had a specific theme. Monday was Hat Day for Put a Cap on Drugs. Tuesday had no school due to the election. And Wednesday was Wear a College Shirt Day to focus on your future. And Thursday was Thoughtful Thursday, which focused on how you can make someone safe. And lastly, Friday was Wear Red. Red Ribbon Week led up to the D one twenty-eight Red Ribbon Virtual Five K Run slash Walk. Its motto was Together. We walk towards a healthier future. Student staff and families were able to register for this social distance event. Prizes and gift cards will be handed out to those who participated. Participants were also able to order red shirts. The Prevention and Wellness Coordinator, Ms. Dillon, used social media to share the images of those people who participated in the weekend. Senior EJ Game said that he went on a walk with his parents and his dog. He enjoyed supporting a great cause. Academics, congratulations to the following VHS seniors who are named National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholars. Alec Coronado Gillan, Matthew Kagan, Owen Lazar, Thomas Rose, and Aiden Trackman. The National Hispanic Recognition Program recognizes approximately five thousand students who identify as Hispanic or Latinx from among the most, more than four hundred thousand juniors who take the PSAT. The NRHP uses the junior year PSAT or NSQ as their qualifying test. The Academic Resource Center continues to be a vital component of e-learning. Many students have utilized their study halls or lunch
Student Representative School Board.
I think we lost her.
Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting. Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting.
We lost you there, Kayla.
Yeah, Kayla.
We lost the last one that you did.
Student Representative School Board.
I will go back. Sorry, my bad. The Academic Resource Center continues to be a vital component of e-learning. Many students have utilized their study halls or lunch periods to receive extra help from student peers or teachers. The ARC will be open during hybrid learning. Teachers and teachers can be found there before school, during school, and after school. Quick shout out to our College Resource Center staff, Ms. Fuentes, Ms. Rollick, and Ms. Delio. On behalf of the senior class, thank you for helping us make our November first deadlines being readily available to answer our questions and push out helpful information. Fine Arts, this fall AP Drawing and Painting students practice portraiture by creating paintings and drawings of children for the memory project. This week, AP Portfolio VHS Junior Jasmine Paulson has completed and mailed her original painting from a child from Venezuela, putting her passionate artistic skills towards an excellent cause during remote learning. AP Portfolio classes attended a virtual field trip for a presentation about what art schools have to offer students in a BFA setting. The Illinois representative for the Malwaki Institute of Art Design presented a virtual campus tour, detailed the majors and minors offered, shared alumni achievements and careers, and covered opportunities for portfolio reviews, development courses, and pre-college credit opportunities. Lastly, Senior JD Giller said it was interesting to hear about how the school interacted with the city and its community. I was intrigued with the available studio space at the Institute was used by undergraduate students because the Institute has no graduate students. She continued to describe MIAID as a nice, small art school. And that concludes the VHS Student Board Report. Thank you for listening.
Okay, next. Superintendent's report.
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
Thanks, Pat, and welcome to everybody that's watching, participating in the Zoom online and to all of you who are here. We have some additional good news briefly. The following VHS seniors were named National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholars. Alec Coronado Gillan, Matthew Kagan, Owen Lazar, Thomas Rose, and Aiden Trackman. The National Hispanic Recognition Program recognizes approximately five thousand students who identify as Hispanic or Latinx from among the more than four hundred thousand juniors who take the PSAT. The NHRP uses the junior year PSAT, NMSQT, as its qualifying test, so congratulations to those students too. The LHS Mathematics Team participated in the Second North Suburban Mathematics League Conference Competition of the Year on November second. Perfect papers were written by juniors Olivia Duffy and Nikhil Patel on the topic of polynomials. This was the second perfect paper in a row written by Nikhil. And lastly, last weekend, twenty students, LHS students, participated in a Zoom Model UN Conference hosted by St. Ignatius College Prep. Students received the following honors. Fatma Elmen Shawi, honorable mention, UNESCO Oman. Emma Black, honorable mention, Jasmine Lafita, Outstanding Delegate, and Pavan Archara, Best Delegate. So congratulations to all those students. Next up is just a review from brief discussion and presentation that we had at PMP meeting on the two thousand two Illinois School Report Cards, and I'll turn it over to Rita.
Rita Fisher, Curriculum.
Prentice, as you mentioned, the Brian, can you give me the opportunity to share my screen?
Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting. Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting. Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting.
You should be able to, you should be able to share it now.
Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting. Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting. Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting. Technical difficulties with Zoom meeting.
There it is. It was on the top, Rita.
Rita Fisher, Curriculum.
Okay, sorry, as you mentioned, Prentice, the Illinois School Report Card was posted last Friday, October thirtieth. The report card this year was slightly different from previous years due to the COVID epidemic, pandemic. It prompted the Department of Education to waive federally required assessments, summative designations, and many of the reporting requirements. And for that reason, the state of Illinois continued the twenty nineteen designation over to the twenty twenty report card. So while the twenty twenty report card was released, the summative designation of exemplary was continued from twenty nineteen for Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School. And that designation means that our two high schools have no subgroup that is performing at or below the level of the all students in the lowest five percent of schools in the state of Illinois, that both schools have a graduation rate of greater than sixty-seven percent. And as a result of academic indicators of performances in the top ten percent of the state. So while some of the reporting measures were not collected, the designation of exemplary continued. We also discussed at the committee meeting the twenty nineteen May AP scores and reporting on AP scores in the district. We've used the year two thousand six as a benchmark in the past to show the percent of students participating in AP exams and the number of exams administered. And we've seen that the number of AP students, which is defined by the College Board as students enrolled in at least one AP course or taking one AP exam, that number has more than, has almost tripled since two thousand six, while the number of exams we've administered in District one twenty-eight has more than tripled since two thousand six. So we are seeing an ever-increasing number of students enter the AP program, and we're administering an increasing number of exams over time. The concern for last spring, given the pandemic and the sudden shift of the College Board in the format of the exam administration as well as the content of the exams would result in some altered numbers for the district. And as you can see, that really did not occur. Our passing percentage, which is generally referred to as the number of exams earning threes, fours, or fives, has remained stable over all the years that we've been tracking this and reporting on it, which generally the kind of common myth is that if you increase the number of students participating in the program, that the percent of students earning those threes, fours, and fives would decline. That has not been the case for our district. In fact, we've rapidly increased the program and maintained that stable passing percentage, especially when you look at exams that have earned a score of four or five. That has been sixty percent in each of the years that's reported on this chart. So given, you know, the concerns last year with what would happen with AP exam administration with students having to shift rapidly to a new format and to altered content. We had students who persisted, who participated in the exam, and teachers who prepared them well to succeed. We really didn't see a noticeable shift in the number of students passing and in the past number of students participating and in the passing percentages that they earned on the AP exam. So we're grateful to all of our D one twenty-eight educators who prepare students so well for this challenging and rigorous curriculum and for our students for their persistence during a time of a pandemic to maintain our excellent participation and success on these AP exams.
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
One of our many terrific success stories over a long period of time in this district. We're very, very proud of everyone and very proud of our students as well for their outstanding work. Okay, thanks, Rita. Okay, next on the Superintendent's Agenda is Certification and Authorization of Performance Recognition Incentive. Turn it over to Bryant here, but just one comment for two or three contracts now with the Teachers Union, we have had a performance incentive in place. There are several categories and a base line data mark that's established through the process. And if teachers reach a number of those markers, then there is a performance incentive that's over and above their typical salary or their base salary does not add to their base for the following year, and it has to be earned every year. And then the Board typically extends that to administrators and support staff under the auspices in our district that everybody contributes to the success of our students. We kind of live that every day in the district. So Bryant, if you want to do a quick highlight there.
Bryant Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
Sure, I'll just, I'll share the data that we shared at the PMP Committee looking at our data that we have. So the first one is our percentage of students that take at least one AP class annually. So looking at that data, our percentage of students that take at least one AP class annually. So looking at that data, our minimum qualifying standard 59%, and this year we are at 73.9%. Percentage of graduating class students meeting the college board readiness benchmarks in both math and evidence-based reading and writing on the school day SAT. Minimum qualifying standard was 70%, and we were at 74%. The percentage of students that participate in at least one student activity, fine arts, or extracurricular athletic program, our minimum qualifying standard is 80%. And with our, between both schools, a total of 83.3%. And then looking at teachers participating in one, one professional learning activity for no compensation earned, and we had all of our teachers participate in at least one professional learning activity. And due to, you know, this past year, you know, as Rita alluded to, the percentage of students meeting the ISB College and Career Ready indicators, we weren't able to start working on that data due to this past school year. So that's where we are with the data. And I think Prentice had this as, we have this listed as a action item.
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
Yes, that's accurate Bryant. Even though this is in the contract, so if the teachers meet the criteria, they will receive the bonus. Again, we extend that to the administrators and the support staff. So I would ask for a motion to authorize payment of the performance recognition incentive for teachers and support staff and administrators.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call please.
All right, got that. Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi. Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Next on the Superintendent's Report tonight is Boys and Girls Basketball Status. And we just wanted to touch base on this again at the broader board meeting. We had discussion about this at the Program and Personnel Committee meeting. So we just wanted to be aware of what the status is in our district and what we think the status is in the area and perhaps the state moving forward. Very quickly as review, about a week ago, the governor and IDPH indicated that basketball would be moved to a high-risk category, Boys and Girls Basketball, along with some other things. And as a result, that would require the sport to be moved to the spring. The IHSA, the next day, I believe it was the next day, the IHSA Board, which is made up of principals across the state, made a decision to counteract that decision by the governor and IDPH and indicate that basketball would be going back, would be going ahead during the winter season. Great concern on a number of fronts with this, and I've expressed that concern before, so I won't go into that. Also expressed that concern in the letter that we put out to the basketball community here. But in short, that decision places local school districts directly in opposition to the governor and IDPH's guidance for winter athletics. And that's very problematic because we have, we have followed that guidance closely going back to March last year. And that's a pretty towering place to, you know, kind of plant your flag in the ground and try and have a fight. But it leaves the school districts in the middle of trying to navigate that. A second piece that the community may not always be aware of, but all school districts in this state started this school year with no COVID-19 liability insurance because pandemics are not covered under the group insurance policies in which districts have their tort and immunity protection. But there is, because we are a public body, there is a higher standard to meet to actually prevail in a liable case, in a liability case. And so if you don't follow the guidance of your governing agencies, in our case, that would be the governor, IDPH, and ISBE, the Illinois State Board of Education, you lose that higher threshold of protection. And although, although the risk may be relatively low for somebody to file and somebody to continue with litigation to get there, it still places districts in a precarious position. And three, there is season jeopardy here that we're concerned about. The season jeopardy would be this, perhaps a few districts in an area decide that they're going to go ahead and play basketball in the winter. And then in the spring, when the governor has said this season is going to happen, all the schools are going to play basketball. It's highly unlikely that there is going to be a decision to allow schools to play two seasons, if you will, of basketball in a year. So it is fraught with a number of issues. Most of the school districts, at least in the North Suburban Conference, Central Suburban League schools are kind of going through processes with their boards right now, will not be going against, so to speak, the governor and IDPH, and will defer to that spring season. So we just wanted to say again that to all the basketball players, we're very sorry that you're caught in the middle of this. As a former athlete and longtime coach myself, I can relate to the excitement of an upcoming season. But I do think it's important for us and other districts to make that distinction so the student athletes can prepare themselves physically and mentally for the season to come in the spring, and they're not, they're not hung out waiting in the balance here. So we just wanted to share that that was a recommendation to the board, on the board of confirmed or informed that. Didn't vote on it, didn't need to vote on it, but at the last meeting.
Kevin Huber, School Board.
Yeah, hey, Prentice, thanks. Thanks for putting the item on the agenda. And actually, thanks for walking through the steps because, again, I think we talked a lot about liability, and I think you kind of, you said it pretty eloquently there. You know, because that's really what the governor, the governor came out and really did frame the liability question, and you have to look out for the assets of the the district. That's one of your responsibilities. But you kind of did say that, the liability, maybe not that, well, the burden of proof may be high, i.e., somebody would have to get COVID, which is possible. Then they'd have to prove, well, they, first off, they'd have to have a horrible reaction to it, which is remote. Then they'd have to prove that it was from a basketball game, which is remote. And then they'd have to prove that we didn't take prudent reasonable standards, which again, we would take, so that's remote. So you're the math guy, but what possible times remote, times remote, times remote? Meaning there is liability for sure, but that wasn't the big issue. I think one of the big issues, and you hit that on the head, is there's just not going to be people to play. I mean, that, that's a huge issue. And so at the end of the day, I think I appreciate you walking through those facts. And again, it, it's unfortunate that adults couldn't act like it. Not only we let the kids down since last March, we continue to let the kids down. Not we, Springfield and now IHSA. So thanks for putting on the agenda. I appreciate it. I just feel awful for the kids, the basketball kids. I feel awful for the football kids. I feel awful for the wrestlers. I feel awful for everybody. But at the end of the day, the one last question I need to ask, and I asked this at the committee meeting, did basketball change? Did the game of basketball change to go from medium to high? And the answer, we all know, we, we know the answer to that, right? It didn't. So that just kind of, that just kind of tells us that there's, there's an arbitrary decision getting made. And it's a shame that, you know, it's hurting the kids. So again, thanks for, thanks for putting it on the agenda. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Kevin.
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
Okay, Capital Projects update. Dan and Mark or Mark and Dan? Who wants to go first, gentlemen?
Mark Koopman, BNG.
I can go first. At Vernon Hills, our capital projects are moving along. In our classroom addition, we are working on the punch list items. Our landscaping is completed on the outside around the classroom addition. The science classrooms, there's some gas valves to complete. We're waiting some, some parts. Those should be completed tomorrow. And the STEM lab casework is en route. It's been shipped, as well as the few fume hoods that we have. So we will be able to use the nine, nine new spaces on Thursday. We will be able to use eight of them when the kids come back. In the cafeteria, in the faculty office addition, we're working on punch list items there. Gym and dance studio, Area C. In the dance studio, we're, we're painted in that area. Cubbies were installed. We're waiting for the flooring to be installed. In the main gym, they're working on getting the plywood base down for the gym floor. So that's moving forward. On the outside, we've got most of the exterior completed. They're working on the concrete and landscaping, as well as the parking lot reconfiguration over in outside the gym. On these Vernon Hills softball infield project, they did final grading and seeding around the site today. So the fences, fence has been restored. Asphalt is in, batting cage posts are in, fence around that area is completed. So just some punchless items to complete on that project. That concludes my report.
Any other questions?
Don Carmichael, School Board.
Yeah, have they finished the water main work that they were doing in the front of LHS?
Mark Koopman, BNG.
Yes, the water main work has completed. And so right now they are drafting the easement agreement for us.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks. Okay, we're going to move to school reopening.
Sorry, one, sorry, I have one more thing on the Capitol.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Sorry, it was a little timely. So I had just gotten what I think are the final change orders for the LHS pool. And I think we're going to be under at the end of the day. So I literally just got them this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to kind of tabulate them and review them and everything, but I think we'll be under. So I'll have an update for you at our next committee meeting. So which, that's, so this is great news, I think, yeah.
And that's, that's great news on a $21.5 million project. And given where we were probably four or five months ago, made a lot of progress on that. Thank you. And thank you to Gilvane for working with us on that. It's good all the way around. Good news. We look forward, we look forward to the updates as we go through committee meetings in December. Okay, next on the agenda is school reopening. And again, we have several filters that we go through, and perhaps the most important one on that list is metrics. Again, we're very fortunate that our board president has a very strong science research background and has really been looking at data and metrics locally in the area at large, at the state level, at the national level, and the international level, and research to help us, to help guide our decision-making. So Pat, I will turn it over to you at this point, and let's see where the conversation takes us.
All right, Bryant, you going to share the presentation there?
Pat Grudy, President. Pat Grudy, President.
Okay, so we will start with the Lake County Schools Dashboard. And I'm going to make one comment before I start. This dashboard has been and continues to be way behind. There are two slides, one on incidence, one on positivity rate. The incidence rate is relatively caught up. It's, it's current up until 11:07. That's as of 5:30 tonight. And it's the other one, the positivity rate, that really hasn't been updated. I think its last point was October 27th. Okay, and that's real important to understand because things frankly keep trending in the wrong direction. And I can tell you based on data that I, I got really from the Daily Herald website that the positivity rates have continued to increase from the 27th. All right. So in any event, the Libertyville incidence rate has continued to increase over the last week. And it's, you know, solidly in the remote region based on the Lake County Department of Health metrics. So frankly, that's no, it, it's, it's not, I don't want to say it's not a change since the last time we met, because it is a change, and that is significantly higher than it was last time we met. It's not a change in the sense that it was remote and it's still remote. Okay, next slide. Likewise, on positivity, I mean, you can see from really about the middle of October, there's been a steady increase in the positivity rate. As of the 27th, that positivity rate was at 7.33%. And from the guidelines, anything below 5% is considered a moderate risk of transmission. Anything above 8% is considered a substantial risk of transmission. All right, so back on the 27th, Libertyville was just hovering just under the the, really the threshold from moderate to substantial risk. And I can tell you that since then, at least the data that I've been able to get access to is suggesting that they'll go considerably above that number. And that, that's in a later presentation. I'll also add that, you know, if I really looked at the incidence rates for Libertyville. And again, these are calculations based on the data from the Daily Herald website. So the numbers may not exactly tie to the Lake County, but the, the trend is the same. From September to October, the numbers, the, the average case rate per day doubled. All right, so it doubled from about 2.4 to 4.8. All right, again, plus or minus a little bit on the numbers, but in any event, the cases doubled. And then relative to, relative to September, the month-to-date November numbers are running about seven times higher than what they're running in September, or about three and a half times higher than what they're running in October. All right, so certainly in terms of numbers of cases, we're seeing substantially more cases than we saw both in September and October. Likewise, on the positivity rate in Libertyville, you know, up until late last week, we were really seeing numbers that were, you know, bordering on the 6% range. And I, I'm honestly forecasting based on that Daily Herald data that since this data was published, we're going to see numbers upwards of, over 10%. So we're going to see a significant increase, I believe, in the next week here in the Libertyville positive, positivity data, once they report that. If that data mirrors what the Daily Herald has been posting, for some reason, the Daily Herald is able to post data every day. And they, they've been showing numbers that lead to positivity rates in excess of 10% for the last week. Okay, next slide. In the case of Vernon Hills, you see a similar trend. Again, the incidence rate is trending pretty solidly in the remote zone. Again, that data is current up until the 7th. Likewise, the, the cases in Vernon Hills were just under two through the month of September. They averaged about five in the month of October. So they were up almost threefold, actually, and from, from September to October. Probably running about 12 cases a day, month-to-date in November. So that 12.2 is up over sixfold from September and about two and a half fold from, from October. So again, similar trend in Vernon Hills, a significant increase in, in the incidence rates in Vernon Hills as well as Libertyville. Next slide. Okay, I believe this positivity data is wrong. And that actually should be 13.19%. I don't see anything in the cases that would lead to positivity numbers quite this high. So that's only my own opinion. I've had no way to verify that. I don't know how these numbers are checked by Lake County, but just looking at the case numbers, I, I don't see anything that, that justifies that very steep increase to 13.9%. Having said that, I believe after they report next week's results, they'll be probably on the order of 10%, fairly similar to Libertyville. Up until last week, I would have projected that it would have been much closer to 6%. So where they're showing numbers over 10%, I would have thought it would have been closer to 6%. So I, I can't explain the disconnect. I don't know if it's the way I'm calculating it or the way they're calculating it. But I really haven't seen anything that suggests that number should be 13. It's 13.19%. All right. In any event, I believe the numbers are trending in both towns to be above the substantial risk zone. Okay, next slide. On the other presentation, can you bring the other presentation up, Bryant? Okay, so this is similar to the data that I presented last time. Okay. So this is similar to the data that I presented last time. Yeah, perfect. Uh, and it's a little bit, it's certainly hard for me to read. Uh, and I'm going to start with the region data. All right. Remember, region nine includes Lake County and McHenry County. Uh, then I've got a little bit of a, a deeper dive into the county and then back into the, um, two towns. Um, so you see here, what's notable here from the end of October until through the first week in November, the region nine positivity rate increased from 9.1% to 12.7%. It's been a very steady increase, very steady and consistent increase. Um, we'll come back to this one. Okay. Um, and then down below really just kind of charts that positivity increase, which reflects the numbers in the tables. Um, you're also seeing, uh, along with the increase in positivity rate, you're seeing a, uh, uh, you know, I, I would say slight increase in the, in the hospital admission rates. Uh, and I showed that in a little more detail on the right hand side. If you look at the availability of hospital beds, just basically, you know, ba- you know, your basic hospital bed and your ICU beds. Um, you can see both, uh, the region is still reasonably solid in the, in the green, uh, range. Um, but week over week, and again, this data is a week old. Uh, they haven't caught up yet. Um, you are seeing a, a decline in the availability of both, um, regular med surge beds as well as ICU beds. All right. So this is going to be a trend that I, I, I think we'll want to watch, and I'm sure the, uh, health professionals are watching very carefully. Next slide. Okay. Again, I, I tried to show here the week over week change and, and again, this data is only up until the end of October. All right. So we're missing about a week and a half in November, but back in, uh, at the end of 10/24, October 24th, the new cases per 100,000 population in Lake County was 170, uh, per 100,000. Okay. And that was officially declared as a warning label or warning level. Uh, in the following week, um, that number has increased to 284. Uh, and again, based on the data I've seen in the Daily Herald website, I, I would forecast this number will continue to increase. Um, testing's up slightly, um, which I guess is good news. Uh, the positivity rate's up quite a bit from 7% to 9.3%. Um, you're seeing an increase in, um, the CLI is COVID-like illness visits to the ED. Uh, I didn't have the hospital admissions from the week before. I simply didn't cut it out. Um, and then also you're seeing an increase in deaths, um, primarily in older people though. Okay. So I mean, the trend in deaths, I think continues to be the same. Um, as, as we've said, as, as others have said, um, younger people are getting sick, um, but their illnesses tend not to be quite as serious. All right. But we are seeing again increases in cases, increases in testing, increases in positivity rates, increases in, um, ED as well as, uh, regular hospital admission visits. All right. You can see actually in, at least in, in 10/31, the hospital admissions triggered a warning, um, you know, indicating some level of concern there. Next slide. Uh, this just shows you the difference between Lake County and McHenry County. All right. So, um, it is true that McHenry County is skewing the region nine data. Um, frankly, quite a bit. Um, but if you go to the, uh, if you actually look at the IDPH metrics and when they get into what they call substantial risk of, um, COVID transmission, that cutoff is a positivity rate of 8%. So whether you're in Lake County or McHenry County, really for the last roughly two weeks, uh, Lake County and McHenry County have both been, um, over that 8%. McHenry County obviously, uh, way over the number. Lake County still over, but less so. Next slide. Okay. And then I tried to actually just show a graph. These are Libertyville and Vernon Hills data. And again, I'm going to qualify. This is, I'm going to call it unofficial data. Um, from the data off the Daily Herald website. And the calculation is you look at the number of positive cases over the last seven days and you divide that by the total number of tests reported over the last seven days. Obviously multiply that by a hundred, that gives you a percentage. Um, and so again, you see about a week ago, we were running right about in the middle or up and down in the moderate risk range. Um, but in the last week, we flipped, um, quite, quite far into the substantial risk range. And this is what I'm forecasting that we'll probably see on the Lake County page, um, once they update it. Assuming their calculations are correct. The only way this data could be wrong is if the number of cases being reported in that, um, Daily Herald website were, were incorrect. The calculation's pretty straightforward. Um, but it certainly indicates that in both Libertyville and Vernon Hills right now, we're averaging 10 plus or minus percent positivity, which is solidly in the substantial risk category. Excellent. All right. So, uh, it was mentioned in at least one of the letters that, uh, last week, um, IDPH and State of Illinois obviously finally have published some data on where outbreaks are coming from. Uh, they previously hadn't said that. And I know the headline was that schools were one of the top um, places where there were, um, outbreaks occurring across the state. All right. So this is really a pie chart that's on their webpage. Um, that actually shows schools in this case, one of the top, I believe they called it the, 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 the second case. Um, but certainly one of the top four uh, locations where outbreaks have occurred. Now I believe, but I'm not positive this, um, the prior definition of an outbreak was when there were two cases, and I believe they just changed that to five.
Right.
Um, so I think that would have some impact on that data. I, I watched the governor's, uh, press conference today. They really didn't have a great explanation on why they changed from five to two. Um, but I think if you replotted this with the outbreaks being five cases or more, it probably looked a little different. But in any event, this was the headline. Schools are a significant source of outbreaks, according to this data. The next page I believe shows the detail there. Um, again, this is a bit of an eye chart. I apologize. It's just hard to get it on one page, but this shows you all the detail of basically the data underneath each one of those slices of the pie. Um, what is important is if you see where the red arrows are, those are the outbreaks across the state by different regions attributable to schools. Hang on one second. Uh, attributable to schools. And so there've been 27 outbreaks, um, across the state attributable to schools. Um, of those, four of those are in region nine, which is our region. And I believe three of those are in McHenry County. Okay. I know, I know more than half of them. Uh, or at least I believe more than half of them are in McHenry County, but that gives you some sense of number one, how many outbreaks are occurring in public schools? And number two, by region, um, ours being region nine, how many are occurring in our region? And this data goes back to July. Okay. There's one more slide coming up that actually shows the data in the last 30 days. Next slide. All right. So this is the number of outbreaks in the last 30 days. Um, in this case, you know, here, schools were the number one cause, uh, second only by, uh, community events in churches. Then on the next slide. Uh, this just shows the detail. Now here in the last 30 days, there have been six total outbreaks, um, classified as public schools across the state. Of those two were, um, in region nine. Uh, and honestly, I forget where they were, McHenry County or Lake County, but two of the six are honestly 30%, 33% of the outbreaks in schools were, um, in our region. Okay.
Yeah. Can I just ask a quick question? Do we have any idea whether those are actually schools that are meeting with students and teachers in the schools in some form of, I mean, because you know, like if we're one of the school districts that's being cited, we haven't even.
Yeah, Karen, that's a good question. I don't have that detail and I honestly can't speak to whether or not those outbreaks occurred in classrooms or whether or not they occurred as a result of say sporting activities at the school. Um, I haven't looked into that level of detail in that data. That's a good question. Um, I will look and see if I can find that. And, and if I can find it, I'll send it to you guys. Okay. Uh, next slide. If there is another, something else. Yeah, I thought that was it. Okay. So that's kind of the metrics as we know, and bottom line is, uh, things are definitely trending in the wrong direction. Uh, and at this point, it is very difficult to forecast whether or when that may change. Um, it's, it's certainly not showing any indication of slowing down at this point. If anything, things are continuing to accelerate. Okay. And frankly, that's consistent with some conversations I've, I've had with some healthcare providers and hospitals who are basically telling me the same thing. They're starting to see a significant increase in number of people showing up at the hospitals in the emergency rooms. Um, as these, uh, cases and positivity rates increase. Okay. Any other questions on that? Sobering. All right. Um, I'd think, given that, I would ask the question, uh, where do we stand on, on opening? I'd like to hear everybody's thoughts on that right now. I mean, I, I, I'll go first. I mean, honestly, up until even Friday night, um, I was very solidly in the position of wanting to move ahead to open the schools. Um, I really feel we're, I, I feel we're ready. Um, and, uh, you know, even at a 6% positivity rate, I was very confident that we could actually do this. Um, but now if I'm looking at something between 10 and 11%, I believe that's much, much closer to uncharted territory. Um, I think the outbreak data that I've shown there from the state, you know, we have to keep in mind that was outbreak data. Um, when positivity rates and, and case incident rates were significantly lower than what they are and how they're trending. So, um, honestly, as I looked at it over the weekend and continued to see the numbers coming in for Friday, Saturday and Sunday, um, my level of anxiety increased, to be completely transparent.
Jim Batson, vice president.
Pat, I'll chime in a, a few comments. Um, first of all, the, um, the idea that we're looking at seven or 14 day rolling averages is a little concerning because we see, you know, pretty high numbers, but that's a reflection of a seven day rolling average. Uh, not a reflection of actually what's happening right now. And I know why we do that and to, to kind of smooth things out, but I'm concerned, like many people, that the numbers are not going to get better. They're only going to, to go up. We've had some very fortunate, um, luck with our weather lately. We've been able to, to remain outside. We've been able to do a lot of things as a community, as a, uh, you know, in, in our area, uh, to be able to remain outside. That's not going to be the case. And in the coming weeks, uh, we're going to be, have a lot of people coming inside, uh, which will only escalate the complications, not only with uh, the virus, but with hospitalizations and other, um, issues, health issues coming up with people being inside. And then you combine that with the fact that we're just a couple of weeks away from the Thanksgiving holiday and as much as we'd like to think we're all going to social distance and nobody's going to meet up and no families are going to gather and nobody's going to anyone's house. We're going to have a substantial number of people that'll be gathering with people who had, they haven't gathered with in, in a while. We're going to have college students coming home from college. Um, so we're going to have a situation where the, a lot of mixing and mingling of, of people over that week, followed by then an incubation period and then another few weeks before yet another holiday break. So I guess, uh, my point is I'm very concerned about us thinking that it's wise to start bringing people back in the building this week. Um, I think we're going to end up in a situation where we're going to be have far more restrictions placed on us pretty soon. Uh, making that, um, uh, an unwise choice. So I have concerns with that. I have concerns with that over a, a relatively short period, but I also have concerns over you know, the, the, the intermingling of people over the next, um, uh, few weeks. Uh, many colleges have chosen to, if they were in person, uh, they send the kids home at Thanksgiving break and they say, okay, the rest of the semester is remote because we don't want to have a lot of people coming and going and, and, and intermingling. So I, I guess my personal opinion is I have concern about, uh, trying to bring large groups of students in anytime before, uh, the first of the year, anytime before the end of the semester.
Pat Grudy, president.
Hey Jim, and I, I can respond to the one issue. Um, looking at, I also do calculate the daily positivity rates in addition to the seven day rolling averages. And again, these are, I'll call them my calculations off that, uh, Daily Herald uh, data. Um, at LHS over the last, roughly the last week, those have gone anywhere from the low of about 3% to a high over 30%. Uh, likewise in Vernon Hills, the low was around two, two and a half percent and the high was around 20%. So day by day, there's big swings, um, just depending on the number of tests done and the number of cases. Um, so you're right, we do try to smooth that out. Just to, it's a little easier to see the trends when the sawtooth isn't as big, it would be if you did the daily thing. But in any event, the trend is clear, whether you're looking at daily or, or, um, the, uh, seven day moving average, it's, it's
And I'll just add one more thing. My, I, I have a concern with the, the positivity rate being so high because you would think if you're doing a lot more testing, which we are, the more testing that positivity rate, if all else is equal, the positivity rate should start to go down. Um, because you're just testing a lot more people. If you're testing, the more people you test, you're going to conceivably test more non-infected people. But it seems like the more, we're doing far more testing, yet our positivity rates going up, which is reflected in the number of cases. So it's just, it's just not a good trend. I just don't see you know, us, us bringing the students in that quickly.
All right. Other thoughts?
I, I echo, uh, what Jim said, and I don't think that I can improve on anything that he said. Um, I think that, uh, it's going to be difficult for us to justify, uh, going against Lake County Health Department's recommendation uh, in the short term. And I think that as we continue to see these cases increasing, uh, as the trends are indicating that it, it does not make sense to bring, uh, students and faculty and staff back into the building. I also echo that I don't see that that happens before the first of the year.
Okay. Casey, Lisa, Kevin, uh, Karen.
Yeah, Pat, first of all, I just am so appreciative to you for all the time you're spending and, and in your professional capacity in the sciences and, and, uh, doing your analysis, uh, to this level is just really welcomed and I really appreciate it. Uh, with lots of conflicting or confusing information out there, uh, you've really helped to make it, uh, something that we can understand and discern. Um, with that said, I s- I see nothing other than it's trending in dangerous levels. It's trending in a place where it would be irresponsible to bring more people back into a building. I, I know that we as a group have tried to take measured steps to bring us back. I know we all want to bring us back, but we've all, uh, said all along, we're going to keep watching the data. We're going to keep analyzing the data. That's what we're doing. We're seeing that the data is showing, um, that we're in dangerous territory here. And I think it would be irresponsible for us to, this week with this kind of numbers, bring the students back into the building.
Casey Rooney, school board.
I agree with Karen and somewhat, uh, Jim as well. Um, you know, don't want to say the same thing four different times, but I, I want to take the chance to thank Pat for all the work that you do and all the communication that you've given us. Um, it's very sobering to see those numbers. Um, the good news is we've done the work to get the schools ready. We can pivot when we need to. Um, you know, when, when the numbers look better and, and I have faith that things will trend better at some point, we're ready to go. We, we've done the work. We know what the process is going to look like, um, and we can get the kids back in the building as soon as, as the numbers look better. But right now it's, it's just at a level that makes me really uncomfortable.
Okay. Anybody else? Lisa, anyone, anyone want to add anything?
Um, why add my thanks for your continuing data analysis. Um, I have also been frustrated as I look at the Lake County data hub. They've been excellent up until um, October 27th, when the zip code results sort of just stopped. And I, I was very hopeful, especially looking at, um, the 60048 and 60061 numbers that, that that aberration that we saw in Vernon Hills of 13.18% on a seven day rolling positivity, which had spiked the three days prior that they posted data would drastically come down. But what we've seen, um, you know, you mentioned Saturday, it was 20% higher than Friday, which was the all time record. And by this weekend, we had broke the record of number of new cases, six out of 10 days. The data is trending in the wrong direction. And because of the holiday that's coming up, I won't repeat everything that Kevin said, but, uh, sorry that Jim said. Sorry, Kevin. I won't repeat everything that Jim said. I know, I know your head just exploded. I apologize. I apologize. That was a mistake. My brain with names. Um, I won't repeat everything that Jim said, other than to I won't repeat everything that Jim said, other than to agree with it. And I think it would be irresponsible for us with the case rate exploding around us. You know, everybody that comes home from Thanksgiving, every family member that gets together is from every community outside of ours. Cook County, McHenry County, Kenosha County, Wisconsin, Indiana, Iowa, every state around us is exploding. And it, it would be highly irresponsible for us just to plow ahead. We are ready. We've done the work. And once the numbers drop, we can pivot, so.
All right, Kevin, I think you're the only one that hasn't spoken. Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, no, thanks.
Kevin Huber, School Board.
You know, I, you know, this stinks. But.
I think all of us would concur on that for sure.
Yeah, no.
To me, this is a big, this is a big disappointment.
Yeah, no. Yeah, but you know, we do know the local numbers. Nobody can dispute they've risen dramatically. I don't know, I still struggle though, how other countries whose numbers have risen more dramatically than our little local numbers, they, they haven't yanked their kids out. The one thing they haven't done, they've shut businesses, they've shut restaurants. They've done everything. You know what they haven't done though? They haven't yanked their kids out of school. It's just a fact.
They, they might have a percentage positivity increase, but they don't have the number of cases that the United States does.
Germany has plenty of cases. Their positivity is extremely high. Merkel chose not to. But again, this isn't about the metrics. I, I struggle with that. That's all I'm one voice that other countries haven't. I also struggle with, we have a governor. We have a governor. Do you not think if schools were a health risk, he wouldn't shut them down? Because he would. Let's, he would. He shut the restaurants down. He shut indoor dining down.
Although he hasn't shut down the casinos.
He hasn't shut down the casinos.
I mean, I, I think at the end of the day, there, there is evidence of various political, I don't want to say agenda, it might be too, too strong a word, but you know.
But if the data that we just presented on schools was so overwhelming, so overwhelming, the governor, I would hope our governor would certainly shut down schools and say, go to remote. He hasn't, right? So again, leads, leads me cause for concern. And I guess the biggest issue, and this is the one that I always harp on, so you'll just have to bear with me is, now I've actually witnessed it firsthand. And that, that's the, and that's against my kids and their little emotional, their little friend bubbles. These emotional concerns are real. But let's just face it. These are real. So while I know rising cases would most likely do infections, what's the impact of these emotional concerns on the future generation? I mean, we, we will never know. But I know I have two kids in my house. I know that some friends in their little bubbles, I, I'm seeing it. And as a parent, I have that perspective. So I can feel that, that emotional need that's not getting met. And you know, Tom and John did something that's great. And it often gets overlooked and they set these schools up to ironically be a safer environment than the kids at home. You don't believe me?
I do believe that, Kevin.
Yeah. So are we not considering making a bad decision by keeping the kids at home? Now, now we're increasing risk. You know what? They're going out to lunches without masks on and confined cars. I mean, there, there's a, they're getting together. People have seen pictures. Why are they doing that? I don't know, but it could be that emotional need. So again, I struggle and I apologize. I know I'm going to be the minority on this one, but I, I just can't get over the hump. If not now, when? The metrics are not going to get better. We can always find a reason not to do something, but sometimes you need to find a reason to want to do something. There's a thing, the old coaches and Prentice knows this, there's a can and there's a want. I know you can do it, but do you want to do it? And I, I still think we, we need to go, but again, that's, that's just me. So I apologize.
So Kevin, I'll, I'll speak for myself. I mean, I, I was historically of the opinion that we really wanted to keep the positivity numbers around 5% in order to go back. And I've honestly moved, I, I, I at this point would be comfortable if we were closer to 8, 8%. I was basing that on what the experience is in school districts that have gone back and that they're not seeing major super spreader events. I do think one of the things we've got to strategize and figure out what to do is how we can push back a little bit on the Lake County Public Health people because I don't see us getting below 5% in the near future. And I hope I'm wrong on that. But I don't think we can wait that long to get back. I really don't. So I mean, you know, like I'm saying tonight, I'm not comfortable going back when we're at 10 or 11%. But I think we got to figure out a number that's, that's below that somewhere where we are comfortable going back. And I don't believe it's 5%.
Jim Batson, Vice President.
So I, I don't know.
And Pat, I, I would agree. And in fact, I, I think I would feel comfortable going back if the trends were actually going the other direction.
I agree, Jim.
For a period of time, even if they were high, if they were headed in the right direction, that's a story. But right now they're headed in very steeply in the wrong direction. And that's the concern as we get there. And the, the data comes out next Friday and all of a sudden we're, you know, it, it's really rough.
Well, and that's, that's a good point. And that's why I want to caution everybody. I don't think we should lock into a number and say, once we're above or below, we're not, or we are. Because I, I think we need more flexibility than that. I think we need to consider a broader body of evidence than that. So that's why I've, I've honestly been avoiding picking a number that says, all right, anything above this number? We're not anything below this number. We are. And Jim, I agree with your point. I think it's the trajectory of these numbers that are most concerning because I just don't have any idea when they're going to plateau. And I, and I don't think it's in the next week or so.
Karen Lundstad, School Board.
Well, I really appreciate Kevin's comments about, you know, you know, the social and emotional needs of the kids is hugely important to all of us, to the parents. Is there more, while we're in these spots, is there more we can be doing? Is there suggestions from any other districts or from our social workers that we can be helping to support this ongoing just drudgery of, of what our kids and our families and, and we are going through. I don't know the answer. I'm sure all the people that are, the professionals in this are working hard at that. I just wonder, can we, can we be proactive about doing something while we continue to measure the physiological safety of the, the virus? I, I don't know what the answer is, but.
I love that question, Karen.
That's a great question, Karen.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I would even add the twist that, and Kevin, you brought this up and I think it's, it's, it's a very astute observation is that social need is now manifesting itself in, in kids, especially older kids that can be home by themselves and their parents are off to work or, you know, busy doing their work somewhere. And they're getting together for lunch. They're finding each other at the park. And, and how we can address not only that, that social need, but, but really, and I don't want to say, you know, raise the awareness of, of the, the value of not doing that, of, of trying to, to find a different way to socialize rather than physically getting together. Because I think that's a, that's, that's a key element too. We, we got to make sure that we're, we're addressing that need as well.
We got a letter from a, from a parent recently about a safety issue with her son, saying that school would be safer because there's another set of eyes. He has a particular health issue. And by having him in school, there would be more eyes watching him. But if he's isolated at home, he's actually in a more dangerous position. And that, that ring, deep and true. I think that the emotional aspect or the physical aspect where it's actually harmful for the kids to be out of school is definitely something that we have to address. I don't know how we address it with the numbers where they are. But that's why I like Karen's position that, you know, is there something else that we can be doing? And I, maybe I cut you off there, Prentice.
No, Don, I, I think actually we could have segwayed our two comments together. I think as we look at these things, we always want to talk about what's the, what's the current state. So at some point, if it's not tonight, I'd want Tom and John to talk a little bit more about what we are doing. Because we're serving an amazing number of kids for not being in school right now. So it's always important to know what that current state is. One, it's good knowledge for you to have as board members. And I know we've talked about that a little bit, but you know, when we're focused on that a little bit more and we can talk about what we've, we're, we have done, we are doing, what we perhaps can continue to do, even with the rising numbers. And I think you'll be surprised by, by the amount of opportunities that students have to connect, you know, outside, outside what would be the traditional school day. But we're always open to, you know, asking that question, you know, what, what more can we do? And we certainly know we have your support to do that. So that's never a delimiter for us. I mean, we would never start and say, oh, the board wouldn't let it. You guys, you all have worked with me long enough that, you know, we would push the envelope. And so we would say, okay, here's what we want to do. Now let me go, now let me go get the board on, you know, talk to the board and, and make sure that, you know, we have their support to do that. So just so you know, we know that from you and we know that door is always open for us to look at some other things and then come and talk to you about what we'd like to do. Right? So perhaps may, maybe even in December, you know, we can have John and Tom talk a little bit more about the things we're doing, wherever we're at at that particular point. Might be really helpful, I think.
Pat Grudy, President.
Okay.
Pat Grudy, President.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, at this point, I don't see a need to take a vote, especially because we don't really have this down for a vote on the agenda. Sounds to me like the consensus is pretty clear. Go ahead, Lisa.
Hey, I would just, I would love to hear Prentice, John, Tom, Rita, Bryant, could you weigh in quickly with your thoughts?
Well, I'm going to, yeah, everybody else can, as, as you know, I always, always empower my team to speak for themselves. But I'm going to give you probably a consensus recommendation based on your conversation tonight. And this may have to go through a couple of filters because a couple of you talked about like going through the end of the semester, right? And so that'll be different what I'm going to talk to you about here and put on the table. And Pat is right, you're not required to, to vote on this. You could have, and, and we didn't want to do that. And I didn't want you to do this. But back in the day, you could have said, this, this is your task. You take care of this. You do this, you make decisions. So you're not required to vote on this. But what Pat is doing is he's polling you tonight. And it has the same effect as a vote because you'll be on record in the minutes, not voting, but just what your opinion is on the recommendation. And I, and we've done that a number of times, but I verified that with, with counsel, just to make sure we were, we were cool with that. Right? So our consensus recommendation based on your conversation, not surprisingly, our conversation has been a parallel conversation. And I want to emphasize a few things that you have all said. One, that we, we have collectively, board, administration, teams, Tom and John, their teams at the buildings, we're diligently to, to get the schools ready for the students to come back. And we're ready. When we're ready to make that decision, we're as ready as we can be. And we know when we get kids in in real time, whenever that is, that every day we're going to tweak that model. You know, once, once we live it, you know, kind of day by day, there'll be things we're going to tweak the first day and say, yep, we need to do this a little differently. We need to change this. We need to amplify what we're doing here. And every day we'll get better at that and we'll be as good as anybody in the country in terms of providing a safe environment for the kids to come into and the teachers to practice their passion and profession in working with kids in terms of teaching. So just to say that upfront. So we're all on the same page. This is not about any of the board members, any of the administrators, the teachers, the support staff, or even the students not wanting to come back to school. It's not about that. But given your conversation and our looking at the same data, my many conversations with Pat on this over the, the last few days, our consensus recommendation at this point would be to pause, and that's what we would call it, a pause. Pause until after Thanksgiving, which would be Monday, November 30th. And so what the calendar would look like would be this. On Monday and Tuesday, so Monday, November 30th and Tuesday, December 1st, would be teacher professional learning day. So in other words, you know, work all the technology, get ready to have the kids back in. Right? And so that's, that's what we would look like those first two days. So Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of that week, the students would return. So that's the second, the third and the fourth. Right? So we go to our blue and orange days or orange and blues days. I always forget which is, which is first in the morning on the first day. And then the following week, which is the week of the seventh. Okay, so seven, eight, nine, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. That week, the kids are all in school, that week. That Wednesday will not be a teacher directed day. It will be a regular day of school. So over two weeks, we're able to balance the number of, of blue and orange days over that two week period. So the same amount of days for, you know, blue and, and orange moving forward. And that's, you know, what that would look like. Now, there's a very important component here. If we're to do this, if you make a decision tonight, or as Pat polled you, if you decide to, you know, let's say affirm that recommendation, or if we tweak that recommendation, but we're not going to start on the 12th and we're going to go to Plan B, then we're going to do a hard pivot tomorrow morning to remote learning. Okay, so we're going to go right back to remote. Right? So because we'll be off, if we're not starting on Thursday, then we want to get back to learning. And so that pivot would be tomorrow morning, we'll start in remote learning. And after we make some kind of decision tonight, then I'll ask Mary and Rita to peel off a little bit because we've got several layers of communication that will have to do with teachers and staff and students so they know what's going on tomorrow and what the next, let's say, couple of weeks will look like. So that would be our, our recommendation. And I understand that several people have, have mentioned, well, perhaps we do this to the end of the first semester. And my suggestion to you would be, take the recommendation that, that I made on behalf of us, you know, kind of assess that. And then if you want to tweak the end date, we can, you know, like the restart date from the 30th to that, then that can be a second kind of recommendation, if you will. That way you kind of give play to this part of the conversation. And if you want to change some of those dates, then we can have that conversation. So that would be the consensus recommendation that, that, you know, we would make at this point. And you can certainly make merit. I think the concerning thing for everyone is just this kind of quantum leap of data, you know, over the last, really even since we met last week, but probably the last 10 days, where it is, it is really arced. Because when we met last Monday, the data was arcing, but it looked like it might come back down a little bit. And then it just kept going up and going up and going up. And that is very concerning. And I'll, I'll, I'll finish, you know, this little set of remarks where I started. And that is, you know, we can't wait to get the kids back in the school. We're ready to get the kids back in school. But the data and the data trending right now is, it's pretty scary. And.
Can I ask just a clarifying question? With the dates that you are recommending?
Yes, Lisa.
We don't meet again, either in committee or as a board, until November 7. So have you, I'm sorry, December.
Sure.
7th, which would actually be the second week in the plan that you discussed.
Yeah.
So can you talk a little bit about what you envision in terms of communication with the board?
Well, I think we would need to be together again. I mean, that's not a, that's not a memo communication. I think we probably need to have a special board meeting or an emergency meeting, just to come back together and let Pat collect some more data to look at that, to talk about it again. If we did the week of the 30th, okay? Is that still the date? What, what does the data look like? So that's a real good point, Lisa. We'd want to sometime between now and probably at least a week before that. You know, even if we met on a Thursday, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Monday. But with me working with all of you, we can pick a date out and then we can come back and look at some data points. And then Pat would do what he, he's been doing almost daily with us during this. He would keep sharing, you know, the incremental data with us as we get, as we get to that point. And that next decision may be, be very obvious. Okay, this is the time to try? Or it may be, okay, we have to extend this further. When I say we, meaning you, you know, with us in the administration. Does that help Lisa a little bit?
Yeah, I'm looking at my calendar. I mean, the best case, we'd, we'd look probably sometime early in the week of the 23rd, which is Thanksgiving week and just see, right? I mean, and I think we would have to see at least a decreasing trend in the metrics, maybe regardless of the number. If that makes any sense.
Or we could even meet on the 30th, Pat. I mean, I guess.
I mean, coming back. You know, we may have a quick check. we may have a check, quick checkpoint before Thanksgiving. I mean, honestly, I, I want to try to get us out of this mode of on Monday, we changed our mind for an impact on what was planned for Tuesday, because in addition to being very disappointing, this whole thing, it's incredibly disruptive as well to teachers, to students, to parents, to everybody. Not to mention bus drivers and everything else we got going, so.
I agree, Pat.
Somehow we gotta get ahead of this thing.
And my guess is that the data that's going to be coming in over Thanksgiving is going to be light. I mean, so to wait till the 30th, I would just,
Yeah.
Seems like the, you know, it seems like we want to wait a while because hopefully these trends is going to start going down, but it seems like the,
Yeah, it gives us almost two full weeks, so.
Yep.
Seems like right before Thanksgiving is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let, 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 let's see. I mean, um, let, let's just see what happens to the data. I mean, it's got, it's got to hit an inflection point here and start coming down because my fear is, I mean, if I knew it was going to stay where it's at, it'd be one thing. My fear is it's not going to do that.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with your, your comment, Pat. I, you know, I feel like we're kicking the can down the road where we set a date and then we changed our minds and we set another date, we changed our minds, we're going to set another date.
Jim Batson, Vice President.
As long as we have a, an opportunity to, to review the data, at least that, like the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I feel more comfortable going into this. I, I just, I, I, I agree. I think we need to give, we can't make a decision the day before, again, because it is disruptive. It's disruptive to a lot of both students and staff and, and our, our parents and, and everything else, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of lesson planning that goes in. So if we're going to change on a dime, it, it's hard to write a lesson, uh, at the last minute. So teachers that thought that they were going to be in training tomorrow, if they're going to be teaching tomorrow, they have to have a lesson ready for tomorrow and it's already late.
Kevin Huber, School Board.
Yeah.
Well, while I acknowledge, Don, you're right, I mean, the teachers, I, we, you guys have to, the emotional devastation that was just caused, I don't think you understand with the kids. As I was going over my board meeting materials this afternoon, my daughter asked me the truth. And I told her the truth. I said, I, I suspect you're probably not going to be going back. And her exact comment to me, the stoic one of my family, was, Dad, you do not understand what this is going to do to the kids. Okay, that's from a guy who has a kid there. So we, we better stop this flip-flopping. I mean, we can't continue to be, because the data was good enough to go before. And when we did the pause did two weeks, the data was bad, but it was good enough to go. The, I mean, I mean, so at the end of the day, we cannot keep flip-flopping because I talked about the emotional toll. Now we're, we're no better than the governor and NHSA, we're creating this emotional toll.
Yeah, but Kevin.
While I respect the issue on the teachers.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Pat, let me finish.
Go ahead, finish, because I don't want to get accused of cutting you off, so go ahead.
Because I have the kids. I have the kids in the district. I have the immediate feedback I'm giving you. What you do with it is, is, as a board, that's what we do. But we cannot be, say, well, we're going to look at it in two weeks. We're going to look at it. Come on. We know the data, and Jim pointed out earlier with going indoors and things like that. We know the data's not going to get that much better. And that comes down to the can and the want. And when everybody else, and again, the other countries are going, the other states are going, let's just, if we're not going to go, let's tell the community and the kids, hey, we're not going to go until next semester. But to say, hey, we're going to look at it again and this, that, and that. If, if anybody on this call thinks that that is really going to get that much better, again, I, I, show me why, because I, I don't see it.
Casey Rooney at School Board.
Again. Carmel, Carmel has decided to do, uh, pause for two weeks after Thanksgiving, too. They're, they're going to stay remote for two weeks after Thanksgiving because of the concern with college kids coming home and people traveling. They're kind of using that as a time to let everybody stay at home, keep the germs to themselves kind of thing. Um, I am concerned about the emotional toll on kids. I know we all are. We all are concerned about that. Um, and I do think it's, it's harder, especially with that age group, to give them a carrot, then take it away, give them a carrot, take it away. It breaks my heart, but I, I almost think we're better off saying, all right, we've only got three weeks, is it three weeks between Thanksgiving and the, the Christmas holiday, including one week of finals, which, you know, you got it, you gotta handle that differently, too. I, I breaks my heart to say it, but I, I'm, I'm more in favor of saying, let's just keep it remote and, and keep it consistent for the kids, even though it's not necessarily what they all want by any stretch of the imagination. At least it's a consistent message. And my experience, while I don't have kids in the school, I did for a long time, and a consistent message with teenagers is probably your best bet.
Yeah, I'm going to have to jump in and agree with, uh, Kevin and Casey about that. Um, I also have uh, a sophomore in the district. Um, so I do very well understand this age group, and, um, this is not what we, any of us wants.
Hessel, School Board.
And, um, I think the initial, um, and I don't want to speak for you, Prentice, but I think the initial push to kick it two weeks forward is just to hold out the possibility that if the numbers support it, we could bring the kids back, be, because for the kids that want it, we want to give that to them. Um, but I, I don't see how with people coming home for Thanksgiving from colleges, with people getting together with family for Thanksgiving, how these exploding numbers are going to magically go down. And if we agree that it's more detrimental, not only to the students' social emotional health, but, but to the teachers in planning quality education, um, then perhaps we do need to just make the call now that, um, this is going to be an adaptive pause through the end of the semester. Um, I think it's a good idea. I think we should discuss that further. And I, I do want to say, though, that it, it, it isn't the school board that's making the numbers explode. We are trying to react and adapt and make decisions based on the latest data.
Lisa Hessel, School Board.
Yeah, I wish we could control the exploding numbers, but, but we can't. And the reason for us changing our minds is not to toy with the emotions of anybody in the community, but to try to adapt to the reality.
Karen Lahnstadt, School Board.
And to be, you know, at least this is the way I've interpreted it, that we've, at, at least in, in terms of how I understand it and what I've been agreeing to do, it's been, we are going to wait, we're going to look at the numbers. We all know that if the numbers go way up, we're not going to be able to take the kids back. I mean, I, I, it is really hard to wait, it's really hard to not know, but we're all watching it together. Everybody at home, everybody on the board, all the teachers, and so maybe it's better to just say, well, you know what, we don't know what the numbers are going to do. We think, you know, we're, our guess is as good as anyone else's based on the science. It's, we're trying not to guess, we're trying to conjecture in an intelligent way. But if it's causing so much distress to be watching and waiting, like, you know, just think of the last week when we've had to wait to know who's going to be president. It's, it's very stressful. Maybe it is better to, I, I mean, I don't know. I feel like we've been in good faith, trying to give hope that, yes, we are hopeful that the numbers are going to go down and not increase. Therefore, we want to plan to go back, but that's not what's happened. And if that's going to put undue, undue stress the other way, then maybe it is better to, to wait. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure that's exactly what you were saying, though, Kevin, so.
But you know what? I mean, we could sit here, we could sit here and say, um, we're not going to, we're not going to put a date in and we're going to just plan to be closed for the rest of this semester. In my opinion, that then sets an expectation and a hope that we will open up coming out of next sem, going into next semester. And you know what? Right now, we don't know that any more than we know we're going to open up in the first week of December. So I, I just don't know that it helps. Um, and I don't.
Pat Groody, President.
To me, that just gives in another kind of false hope. I think to Karen's point, we're doing what we're doing, which is disruptive, but we're trying to actually find a way to make this happen. And I'm, let me just put some other numbers. Jim actually just forwarded me another website, just to put in perspective. They're, it's a Northwestern website. They're confirming the positivity rate combined Libertyville Vernon Hills through today, 10.81%, fairly consistent with the numbers I showed you guys. But here's a number that kind of blows me away. The number of new cases, that's the seven-day number of new cases per 100,000 population is 427.6. IDPH defines substantial risk as anything greater than 100. Okay, so we're currently at a rate, so we can debate the metric, whether 100 is a good number, a bigger than 100 number is, but we're four, almost four and a half times over what the best hea, health experts in our state are saying is a substantial risk of, of, um, of, uh, you know, outbreaks, uh, from COVID, so.
Hey, Pat, did you say Northwestern Hospital? Just so that we can?
I mean, I just looked at the webpage. It's an nd.edu. I think it's, I think it's Northwestern.
Northwestern University?
It looks like a great website. I'll send it to you guys. Um, again.
We need to make that public.
Uh, we certainly can. I mean, I, I'll, I'll make sure the minutes reflect what I, what I just quoted. But again, you know, Kevin, I, I emphasize with you, I, I get that emotionally for all of us, this is hard. It's not, probably not nearly as hard as it is for the, for the, for the kids. And I get that because, I don't know, I don't know about you guys, I'm COVID exhausted, too. Okay? Um, and I, you know, I'm pushing hard. I want to push hard. I want to get our kids back. Okay? And, and so I think all of our efforts are still directed towards, we need to get our kids back. I'm very concerned about some of our underperforming kids. I'm very concerned about some of our kids that are even taking AP classes that I know are struggling. Okay? I am very, very concerned about that, in addition to the emotional and social aspects of it. But, um, you know, we're looking at, I'm, I'll, I'll admit, it's a relatively small number of outbreaks in schools when the transmission rates were low. And these are now upwards of five times, you know, anywhere from three to five times greater than that. And, and again, we're, we're back into the experiment stage. We don't know what's going to happen with these kinds of transmission rates. And at least from anything I've read, u- until recently, maybe, I mean, even in Europe, the, the transmission rates historically have been lower. We'll see what happens in Germany now. Maybe it's going to get, maybe they've got.
Pat Groody, President.
Hey, Pat, we've, we, we do have a couple of students here, so maybe.
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask Amal, would she?
Yeah, maybe it'd be prudent if we ask Amal and Kayla.
I only see Amal.
Yeah, Kayla's up there. She's up there.
Okay. Oh, there she is. Yeah, okay.
Oh, she's on the top of my screen, maybe not yours.
I'd love, love to have you guys weigh in.
Student Representative, School Board.
Amal, you want to, would you go first?
Um, if I'm being completely honest, I'm, like, I'm so conflicted with both sides because obviously what Mr. Huber was saying, the emotional toll of it being like, we were set on going back Thursday, and then that being like, okay, well, that's done. Um, but also, um, looking at the data and looking at the trends, I think that, that is, like, the question is, is it safe? Because it's not about the students who are going to survive it. It's not about the students who are going to, or who aren't going to have symptoms. It's about the vulnerable teachers and the vulnerable students, and it's also about the kids who, um, it's also about like the responsibility of the students who, kids, like, I don't think they're willing, they're, they're not ready to have the responsibility of tightening up their groups, keeping it socially distanced, um, and kind of aligning their words with the, with their, with their actions. And I mean, I, like, I feel like we all want to go back so bad because obviously, like, for me, per, like, for me and Kayla, it, it, it's like our senior year. But I feel like do senior year events trump, um, safety? It, I, it just doesn't. And I, like, I, like, Mr. Huber, I know what you're saying with, like, it being like you're, we have a set date for Thursday, like, we, we, um, like mentally prepared it. Teachers have tomorrow and after tomorrow as an asynchronous day, so the disruption is real. But, um, I don't know. I, I just see both sides and it's really conflicting within me. Be like, as a teen, I want to go back. As a high school kid, I want to go back and I want to, like, experience the things that I'm supposed to experience. But we go back and we're not allowed to gather around the hallways. We're not allowed to, we're not allowed to talk with, we're not allowed to, like, like, even like Dr. Casey's it during passing periods. Like, there are groups in the hallways, like, you see your friends, that's where you see your friends. And we're not allowed to do that. So it doesn't make kids feel more lonely because when you're online, you know where your friends are, you know that you can easily contact them. But when you're in person, you can barely even talk to them. So that's, that's just it. And then also, like, the other side of safety. But then, as it, like, there's just two sides to it that I'm conflicted about that, I don't know. It's, it's hard for me to give a, an opinion. Like, as a board rep, as someone who's been looking at the data, I don't think it's safe. But as a teen, and on behalf of all high schoolers, people want to go back. And everyone wants to go back. That's universal. But I don't know. I, 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 I can't say, like, I, I just don't think I'm qualified enough to say something that would put me, like, I don't know. I don't know, Kayla, go ahead.
You're qualified.
I think your comments indicate you're quite qualified because everything you just said, I think any one of us could, could certainly echo, especially on the conflicted part.
Yes.
So, so I think your comments were, were very, uh, well-spoken.
Kayla.
Yeah, I was just going to say, like, don't get me wrong. Like, I want to go back so badly. And I want to go to school, but I have a high-risk mother. And because of that, that makes me not do things that I would normally want to do. Like, I want to go back to school, but I can't go back to school because of my mom. And so I totally get what you're saying. Like, my social emotional health isn't great right now. I would love to see my friends in school, but at, the cases are going up. And if you're just ignoring the scientists and information, that's ridiculous. Like, you cannot ignore that. You cannot ignore safety protocols for your social emotional health. Because what's more important? That, that's my opinion. I know this can get political or anything like that, and I don't want it to. But.
Student Representative, School Board.
For the safety of our community, we cannot go back yet.
Okay, good job, Kayla. Let me reassure you.
Can I add something?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I was just going to say that, ah, shoot, it literally slipped from my mind.
All right, well, hang in there, it'll come back.
Oh, I was just, I got it, I got it. I was just going to say that, like, um, like, I understand, like, I've been going in person for, um, for, for Monday, for student council, and we've worked, working hard. And I've seen the school and I've seen the preparations of the school. And I obviously, like, like, I obviously really, like, I've seen, like, the hallway split in half. I've seen, like, those socially distant signs. And I've seen all that. I walked it with Dr. K. Like, it's, it's, it's so different. And it's like, it's just like, it's scary because there's so, there's so many complications of this whole thing that it could be like the social emotional complication where I've, I can see my friends struggling and I can see them wanting to go back and I can see them wanting their friends. But, and then there's the safety complication of COVID, but there's just so much that, that's just so scary about this whole thing that I think we can all agree on is COVID just needs to get wiped out. But that's all.
Hey, can I ask you guys a quick question? So as we've been discussing whether it's better to, like, do the, you know, let's, let's plan on going back, hopefully going back right for Thanksgiving versus let's just call it for the semester. We're, weigh in on that if you wouldn't mind. I know we're asking a lot of you, but I just would be interested to hear your opinions on that. Would you rather kind of have that carrot? That's hopeful, that says we're ready, as soon as the numbers drop, let's get back in there? Or would you rather say, you know what, let's just know what we've got? And yeah, I'm just wondering what you think about that.
Student Representative, School Board.
Um, I think disruption is huge, especially for teachers when there's disruption up to, like, the three async. So today was a teacher-directed day and teachers were under the presumption that tomorrow and after tomorrow were asynchronous days. But off of Dr. Groody's point, we don't know if we'll be going back second semester because it's still, that's, that's the middle of winter. January isn't, that's after New Year, that's after New Year's parties, that's after Christmas celebrations. That's after a head, college kids still being at home and still, still going out. Um, that's, we don't let, um, we, we do have, like, what Kayla's saying, a different political aspect. We have a different public, political plan that will be put in place as of January 20th. So to say that we would go back second semester, like, I see, like, I agree with Dr. Groody. I think it's the same thing as false hope. So if we're going to give false hope either way, I, I would just say, like, you put a day, but like, either way, there could be disruptions on either end. And that's for, like, my main concern, the teachers, is having them being like, having them, having their days planned out, but then it just becomes completely disrupted, disrupted again, and I feel so bad for them. But I don't think we can avoid that at all.
Student Representative, School Board.
Yeah, like, I totally agree. Like, we cannot keep on setting a date and then changing it. Like Kevin said, like, we can't do that. So this, the numbers are just going to go up. So I feel like what we need So I feel like what we need to do is that we need to look at, obviously, each day we're looking at the, uh, the data and stuff like that. But we, I don't think we can set a date until we know that this is gonna be combatted and we have a plan. We do not have a plan, our government does not have a plan, our state does not have a plan, our community does not have a plan, so there's nothing we can do. So, someone needs to figure out a plan after January twentieth, and we need, and we need to figure out what to do. So we can't do anything until then. And the fact of the matter is, I'd rather go back to school second semester than go to school one week and one day and then come back. Because it's just hard for kids and it's, it's confusing as well. So thank you for asking for my opinion. And also, you guys are doing a great job of, um, that email that you sent out about flu shots. That's a great, great point, you should keep on doing that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, great comments, you guys. Anything else?
Pat Grudy, President.
All right, uh.
Pat Grudy, President.
I think, I think we move ahead as Prentice outline. It's, it's not a sure thing, we're gonna, we'll try, we'll, we'll try not to make decisions the night before things are supposed to change. Let's hope we start to see a downward trajectory if everyone in the community kinda helps us mitigate the spread here. Um, I wanna continue to push to get open as soon as possible, and let's hope the metrics get better here for us.
And if that's the case, can we, uh, get together that week before Thanksgiving then and look at data again?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll set them up, it'll be, it'll probably be relatively brief, and I'll, I'll send up an, an update every week, uh, between now and then.
So I'll set the meeting up, we're gonna meet Monday or Tuesday, whatever works for you guys, I'll send you out a little thing.
Let, let's meet, let's meet Tuesday, because Lake County doesn't usually update the website, you know, at night around five thirty.
That's true, Pat.
Although, I think we have access to that data in different ways. Um, it's nice to at least get their official, um, information whenever we can.
So Tuesday before, just let me ask the question, uh, while we're here, and again, if it's, if you check your schedule later and it's different, we'll work around that. Uh, is everyone available that Tuesday? That would be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving weekend?
Yes.
Are we good? Okay, Pat's good, Casey's not.
Nope, sorry, my son and granddaughter come in that day and.
Can I see Monday? Then Monday would be better.
If Monday's better, we can, we can do Monday.
Monday is better? Then Monday would work, Casey?
Yeah, I could do Monday, they, they come in Tuesday night, so I'm not gonna be.
Do the best we can to get whatever data we can, no, that's fine.
Okay, so are we also okay on Monday? Thumbs up if you're good on Monday?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Now, we may know more trending one way or the other before that anyway. I mean, if things start to flatten out, that's one thing, if, you know, I think we'll.
Oh, yeah, well.
Can I? Can I just ask that we ask the community, parents, teachers, uh, students to join us in watching all this? So that it's not really a surprise, um, to be watchful, to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish, we're trying to get people back. Um, but watch what we're watching. And so it won't be such a big jolt to say, oh, gosh, we're, um, you told us a date and, and now we're not doing it. Well, it should be fairly clear to, to us, I think. Uh, if things are continuing to, you know, especially if things are still going up, I mean, that, that's probably not gonna happen. So if we all kinda join together and have some of that awareness, in addition to watching for what our discussions are and getting the, the real great data from Pat, um, you know, maybe that helps us all sort of get along this waiting, stopping, waiting, stopping, um. I know, obviously, we're not gonna all agree on exactly what the data means, but to some extent, if we're seeing dramatic things, we're gonna know.
Yeah, Karen, one of the challenges, there, there are a number of people in the community, quite frankly, don't believe the data. And, and in their defense, I mean, Illinois has continued to move the goalpost here a little bit, and the way they've, you know, it, you know, started counting antigen testing, now counting probable cases and things like that, so, you know, it's, it's, there's an argument to be made there, but again, if you look at three points, cases are going up, positivity rate's going up, hospitalizations are going up. So there may be some tweaking in absolute numbers here, but I don't think you can argue the trend that things are getting worse. Okay, but, but I know there's a lot of pushback in the community about the data and, and what we're, what we're doing, so, okay. All right, uh, good discussion, um, look forward to sending out more data. Uh, let's, let's just hope this thing turns around here. But I really, really, really appreciate the comments of both you, Amal, and, and Kayla, that is just so incredibly helpful to us.
Pat, two, two questions, did everybody have a chance to, to weigh in on that recommendation? Are we good? Just in terms of, of affirming it, again, you don't have to vote, anybody else wanna say anything? Okay, the second question is, it's, it's nine sixteen P M. We're, we're not gonna be able to ask people to pivot, because they had no idea this was coming. So what we wanna do is, we'd like to do, uh, teacher-directed asynchronous day tomorrow. Um, uh, there's just no, there's, there's, it's not fair to make that pivot at nine twenty in the evening.
Kouliantis, Principal.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I, I would like the board to strongly, um, consider us, um, moving forward tomorrow with an asynchronous day. Um, a lot of our students might even be, you know, they may sleep late in the morning. If we have a teacher, all of a sudden have to plan a lesson tonight and then shift tomorrow. Um, first of all, we've gotta notify our entire staff, then we've gotta notify our entire parent community and our student community. And at nine fifteen at night, even, I don't know if people would be checking these communications. So, um, I think we need to, um, allow our staff and our students to be prepared for the day that they were planning for tomorrow. Um, we can shift all communication then throughout the day to prepare for the rest of the week. But as a building principal, I would, um, strongly recommend staying with tomorrow being asynchronous.
Absolutely, Tom. I mean, I kind of assumed that that's what it would be, how, how would we possibly get that message out at this point? It's all part of being flexible and just rolling with this as we can. Um, and, you know, I appreciate everything the teachers have done to roll with it and, and step up and be there for the students. Um, and, you know, like I said, be flexible in this situation, so, absolutely.
The, so, the only thing I wanna highlight though is there's an increasing level of feedback that the asynchronous days are not working. Um, I don't know if it's a vocal minority or a broader majority, but, um, if you guys could just kinda keep your eyes and ears in the buildings and um, see what's going on there, I mean, I, I hear stories of kids on Netflix all day during the asynchronous day and, um, other things like that, so I, I do think that's something we gotta keep an eye on, all right? But I certainly understand we can't pivot at nine, nine twenty.
John Gilliam, Principal.
Yeah, Pat, just, just to respond to that, that is something that we even spoke today about in our staff meeting. Uh, and remember that asynchronous days are not the norm, teacher-directed days are the norm. Uh, and I think more and more teachers are using teacher-directed days to have synchronous events. These asynchronous days are not normal, they don't happen very often anymore. Uh, and I would even say if, if we're concerned about, um, the rest of the week, then maybe we pivot back to hybrid on Wednesday, and we do really what we were planning to do, uh, that week after Thanksgiving. And that would be, we'd have eight days starting Wednesday through next week. We don't have to maybe do a teacher-directed Wednesday, um.
Yeah.
You know, and we could do eight, eight hybrid days, or, I mean, eight, uh, orange-blue days, which would get us a four full cycles and.
Well, yeah, I think that's what we were talking about, for sure, so if we do asynchronous tomorrow or future, uh, then we just roll through eight days, so we have a balance.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna. Honestly, I'm, I'm comfortable with you guys dealing with that in the buildings, I'm just trying to raise the issue that, frankly, what I'm, what I'm beginning to hear more and more about is Wednesday's not, still not working right.
Yeah, I mean, it, from my opinion, tomorrow was gonna be an asynchronous day anyway. So I, I think by moving ahead with what was planned, it's gonna be far more effective than any synchronous day when only half the kids know about it, at, you know, in, in the morning or, you know.
Amal will have to go as planned, at this point, okay?
I, um.
Tom Kouliantis, Principal.
Prentice, I also think, um, and I don't know if we need to discuss this here, not as the things are changing, but we.
Is, is it a board topic, Tom, or is this an administrative team topic?
Well, it's the implementation of our Wednesday, of our hybrid schedule on Thursday. Um, we, we probably want to implement that schedule on Thursday, because it, uh, the, um, in it, you know, teacher lesson planning is important and that happens, but there is so many other plans and logistics and operational planning that occurs. We've been altering, like, for example, I E P meetings, uh, five oh four meeting times, all kinds of things, starting Thursday for our new hybrid schedule. So, mm, I think we would want to still implement that on Thursday, it keeps the orange-blue days. And, uh, all it does is it alters the time a little bit, but that would enable us to continue, um, with some of the planning that has been happening, um, that rather than have to redo all of that to go back to in the e-school calendar, because remember.
Tom, Tom is, and again, this is probably an administrative discussion, so I'm gonna do this very quickly, and we need to move off of this, because this is really not a board discussion. Um, Tom, I'm, is that gonna be too confusing to people, right? Okay, we're go, we're going back to remote, but we're gonna use our hybrid schedule to do it.
We, uh, Prentice, we had a plan to transition to that schedule on Thursday anyway, and everyone's planning accordingly. So that could be included in the communication that Mary and I shared tonight announcing this. And, uh, we would include the schedule and very clear language about that, uh, that shift.
Okay, so before we do that, let's make sure, Rita, you wanna review that just quickly with the board when we talk about that? I wanna make sure the board understands in what we'll be doing Thursday.
So what, what we were talking about is, uh, had we started, uh, with hybrid on Thursday, there was a slight shift in the schedule for the time of each period, but we, we, we would be shifting to that new time schedule
Yeah.
on Thursday as planned, despite the fact that we're remaining, uh, in e-school, so.
Kevin, go ahead, I see.
That was a relatively, that was a relatively minor change, if I recall. Okay.
Kevin, what were you gonna say?
No, that, that, go back to what the kids know, they need certainty, they know what they're currently operating in remote. Fine with tomorrow, John came up with a reasonable solution, kick back yen, starting Wednesday, in a remote schedule that they know, we get eight full days in. I, I don't see why, I mean, again, we're focusing now, well, the staff is prepared. Let's focus on what the kids are ready, the, the kids know remote, you just took away something from them. Give them back at least something they know, now you're gonna say, well, let's start Thursday with a different out, doesn't make sense to me.
But, let me, just, just to me, I wanna just make sure I understand it, can you, can you show that again, Brian?
I believe John's suggestion was to, uh, to make that shift on Thursday to the schedule as planned, but to begin to.
I thought he said Wednesday. No, I thought John said Wednesday, John?
Yeah, to the, to make the shift on, I'm sorry, Kevin, I spoke incorrectly, yes, on Wednesday. To make that shift on Wednesday to the schedule that we had planned, uh, so that then we would begin alternating orange and blue days through the next week, but, uh, he didn't reference the schedule time, that's something that we had discussed, uh, previously as something that we all thought would be a good idea to move to the hybrid schedule as planned, like Tom recommended, based on other things that had, that students were counting on that time change, and teachers had planned for that, uh, time change in the schedule. So that was, that was our recommendation, John's recommendation was to skip, was to skip the teacher-directed Wednesday both this week and next week.
Yes.
Yeah, and.
And then it stays that way, it, it stays that hybrid schedule forever now, whether we're remote or hybrid, so that shift was planned.
That was planned, and then it was planned to remain that way, whether we would ever have to shift back to e-school from this point forward. So, we're making the shift when it was planned to be made, and we would keep that schedule in for the remainder of the year, whether we are in e-school or in a hybrid mode.
And Rita, just summarize for us, what's the impact on the kids, actually?
Right, you wanna show that, you have the schedule up, had it asked to bring that up again?
Rita Fisher, Curriculum.
So, uh, this addresses, um, longer passing periods between classes, which we had heard from students that, uh, they would, uh, prefer. Um, so, the impact is that the periods start, so period one begins at eight twenty-five, so that's a shift. Uh, the periods are a bit longer, but there are also longer passing periods in between the periods to accommodate shifts from one class to another. So it, it alters slightly the start of the day, not the end of the day, it lengthens the periods a bit and it, um, increases the passing periods between classes.
But from the standpoint of the number of periods it meet in a day and which periods meet in a day, that hasn't changed, has it?
No changes.
Okay, that's what I, that's really what I wanted to emphasize, it's really a tweaking of the start and stop times.
Stop time remains the same.
And it addresses one of the concerns, which is the time in between classes has actually been a little bit too short, is what we've heard.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, and, and.
Jim Batson, Vice President.
Well, it's good to communicate this and, and get this out so we all understand it, I, I sort of agree with Prentice that this is really a, more of an administrative thing. The board doesn't have to take action on this, not much for us to do, so, we appreciate the update, though.
All right, I'm, okay, if, now are there any other questions about how we're proceeding? Because I wanna make sure that the seven of you under, understand the recommendation that you've con, concurd with or affirmed tonight, and then how we're gonna proceed, are there any other questions from you? Because what's gonna happen behind this is, I'm gonna ask Rita and Mary to peel off, start doing some of the initial communication. When this meeting, when our meeting ends, then I'll peel off and, and join them for whatever else needs to be done. Or, so are we good at this point?
Yeah, yeah, again, I, we, I don't know if we're good or not, Prentice. Uh, I guess, again, I'm confused. I understand we're not going, the kids aren't going back, so I will tell the people who got their IDs today, just to save them. We'll tell the freshmen who walked the buildings today to relax, right, because they did. So we understand that, I think we're all good there. Are we changing? I understand we're doing, over the next two weeks, we're gonna do eight, let's just call it block days, for the lack of, so, I think I'm good there, I'm, at least, I think that's what I understand, eight block days. I am concerned on, now we're telling the kids, instead of starting the classes for their usual block days on remote at nine, they're gonna start at what time? Eight twenty-five, they're gonna get an hour and thirty minutes for lunch to go get in trouble, because of office hours and lunch, under the new schedule, I think. I think, is what I saw. I think, if you pull it back up, so, I guess, wha, what are?
So what do you wanna do?
But Kevin.
No, I'm asking, what do, what do I tell my kids on Wednesday morning, what time do they get up at?
But, but Kevin, that, that's the schedule we've been talking, if we went to hybrid, that's the schedule that we would be using. I mean, that's the schedule we've been talking about for four weeks.
But we're not, we're not going to, the issue is, we're not going to hybrid. So go back to what they know, right? I mean, again, now you're giving them three schedules, the remote opening, the remote with the hybrid times, and then hybrid if we ever go back, and then we can pivot to remote, I agree, that's fine. But you're introducing uncertainty into an already chaotic environment, that's all I'm saying. You get, but I agree with the Prentice, you, Tom, John, Mary, Rita, you handle it, we shouldn't have even talked about it, all right? Because once you talked about it, introduced it, now you're getting nineteen different opinions, one of which is mine being vocal. And that's not really fair, and we have a lot of other business, including the tax levy to get to.
Yeah, but, but Kevin, we should have talked about it, because as soon as you got one, one note from a resident that said, how come you changed my kid's schedule? You'd be asking these guys why we did it, so we had the conversation tonight, so you'll be able to answer that question.
Nah, I think I just clearly said I won't be able to answer the question why we're introducing a new scheduling. It's because hybrid's supposed to start, but it didn't, right? That's what I'm answering.
So the good news is, when we do pivot to hybrid, and I'm confident we still will, all we have to do is bring the kids in the building, they're already used to it. Right?
Jim Batson, Vice President.
Yeah, this was an adjustment to the schedule, regardless of whether we're hybrid or whether we're in e-school, it was going to be the new schedule, so it would be consistent if we had to pivot either way. So, I, I think it's a, a one-time change, and for the duration, until we're all back, hundred percent in the building, I think this will be pretty much our, you know, our, our, our method from now on. I don't, it's nothing that, that the board needs to act on, so I, I think we, uh.
Okay, all right, let's move on.
As long as you know what it is, okay, so, that's the point, okay, all right.
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
Okay, uh, Mary and Rita, we're gonna let you, we're gonna let you two go.
And I'm, uh, Kayla, too.
Uh, yes, if you'd like to go.
Thanks.
Unless you want to stay, unless you want to stay for the tax levy, that, that would be okay.
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation, though.
Pat, do you want to do, uh, Pat?
The best part of the meeting.
Pat, you want to do a quick update on diagnostic testing?
So real quick, um, one, we did receive a proposal from the one vendor we've been speaking to, so we're reviewing that. That proposal would include, it's a test from Yale University. Essentially, it, it mirrors the U of I saliva test that we would use for testing faculty and staff and, and screen them on an ongoing basis. Um, so we're, we're reviewing that. I, I don't know whether that's a direction we'll want to go or not, but we have the proposal, we're reviewing it. The other news I will share, though, is Lake County today finally came out with, what it takes to access the rapid Abbott test. All right, so we're, we're rolling that into the discussions with the vendor that we've been talking to, to see whether that's feasible also. In, in any event, nothing would be feasible before the beginning of the second semester. Um, but things are continuing to progress. It was a big breakthrough today, at least to get the six-page document from the Lake County guys on how to access the Abbott test. So bottom line is you need to be a qualified person to run the test and do all that kind of stuff. So that's why we want to look for an outside source that could do that. Okay, so we're getting closer and closer, at least having a proposal.
Pat Groody, President.
Stay tuned.
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
Okay, Pat, and then, uh, health and safety, we've gone over several times and we've talked tonight. The buildings are ready when the students do come back. So, um, transportation now, uh, Dan mentioned today that, of course, we've got transportation lined up and ready to go for Thursday. Four times, you know, bringing the kids in in the morning, dropping, uh, picking them up, uh, when they leave in the morning, bringing them in for their afternoon, taking them home for their afternoon. So that'll be on hold for right now. Dan, do you want to comment on that at all?
Dan Stanley, Business.
Yeah, um, you know, we had the thing in the spring where, you know, we were pandemic and everyone was trying to survive. Um, but this fall, we've, we've really been careful to pay for services when we get them. Uh, they have been asking for us to offset, but I kind of ran numbers and did the math, like if we were running these four tiers, um, based on the per route we pay, that, you know, they'll be fine if we end up, you know, a hundred and three days doing that ninety-six routes a day. Um, but now with this, and now with this changing, that's a little, that's a little bit different, depending on when we go back. So I guess what I'm saying is, um, we need to think about our transportation company. Um, also, you know, before, when we've made decisions to delay, it's usually been a few weeks ahead of time. And so I've been able to let them know and they've been able to adjust to that. But I don't, I don't know what they've already done in terms of getting drivers ready to go for Thursday, you know, because that's in really two business days. So they might already have drivers kind of keyed up and they could be, you know what I mean? Like they're an employer that, they have to figure that out. So I will have to figure out something to do with transportation. I'm going to contact them as soon as possible. Um, but I'm just, we're, we're going to have to figure something out with transportation. So that's, I guess, that's really my point.
Okay. Um, ESP, uh, we've got, um, uh, several ESP staff that we talked about at the committee meeting, uh, tracking COVID-19. Dan will continue to track those expenditures as we move forward, report out particularly at committee meetings, uh, anything that we want to report out. Of course, we can do here. Excuse me, dry throat. Um, and I think that's, uh, Pat, just to finish up my part of the report here, we had one FOIA request, uh, since last month. Uh, the FOIA request was received on eleven five two thousand twenty. The deadline response was eleven twelve two thousand twenty. Requester was Gyro Gomez, Research Analyst, Chicago Land Labor's District Council, and L Gomez at LDCLMCC.com. Uh, information requested bid results as read from the bid opening on eleven five two thousand twenty at ten AM for the demolition of structures bid. Uh, follow-up was done by Dan Stanley and the request was fulfilled and the response was sent on eleven six two thousand twenty. And Pat, that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks. All right, the consent vote agenda is listed. We reviewed it last week in our committee meeting. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
You're muted, Carol.
Sorry about that. Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy? Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Carm, I mean, Batson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Uh, program and personnel, Chairperson Batson.
I gotta hit my unmute. Okay, um, hang on just a second. So the question here, our first agenda item is, uh, ESP recall.
Jim Batson, Vice President.
And in light of our change, do we change this?
Bryant Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
Move forward.
Bryant, go ahead.
So if you look back at the consent agenda, you know, we had already recalled some of our support staff, um, back, um, and, you know, started today, basically tomorrow. The next group we had put on for the agenda for today to start on, uh, Wednesday to prepare for the students coming in on Thursday. So you can see those are mostly eleven eleven. Um, we do also, those are all recalls, so item, um, I, and then, um, uh, items two and three were a little different. I, item, uh, you know, II is a replacement for someone. Um, and then, uh, we have a certified nurse's assistant for both buildings. Um, and she would be starting on eleven sixteen to help, um, with a lot of our nurses. So the question is for all of the hires for eleven eleven, they were, you know, scheduled for Thursday or Wednesday, you know, with the expectation that students were coming in Thursday.
So Bryant, what do you, what do you recommend here? I mean, obviously, we're not going to have students in the building, but, um, the one thing I want to guard against, I want to be ready when we're ready, that's all.
Bryant Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
We can delay, you know, when we bring them back. Um, you know, my, you know, I struggle with, you know, we've, you know, asked people to come back on the eleventh, um, and, and then we're delaying it and yo-yoing. You know, we're, we're, you know, originally, we had talked about coming back in October, had started talking to people, and then we're talking about November, you know, and they're, you know, planning to come back, and now we're delaying it again. So, uh, you know, I can make a recommendation to delay it, or we can, you know, bring them in and we will, um, you know, find work and...
Lisa Hessel, School Board.
I'd like to suggest delaying their start date, please.
What do the rest of you think?
Tom and John, do you, and, and whoever else, um, now that we're this far into the remote, are, are there gaps that teachers would find having assistance helpful? So that not only can we, um, be increasing, meeting the needs of our kids because we have extra help for however many weeks? Is that because it just feels like we're messing with people? I mean, I know it's beyond our control, but
Karen Lundstad, School Board.
You can't just keep hiring people and then saying, oh, sorry, you know. But, but obviously, you need people to be doing important work with students, if possible. But I know, you know, that's, maybe that's an impossible question for you, uh, two days before, or a day before it starts, but...
Karen, it's a good question. I, I think many of the staff that we're talking about are necessarily classroom aides, like you're referring to. However, um, so I would understand the, you know, the, the desire, the need to push back. However, if we were to move forward with, uh, bringing those ESP in, we, we would find those kinds of, uh, student engagement, student follow-up, um, you know, students who are, uh, performing under, um, you know, under standards to, to try to, to connect adults to kids in that way. It's not necessarily their current job description, uh, but I would think it would be important for us to find meaningful work for them to do, and that has to be, uh, connecting with kids, whether that's working alongside teachers or us finding other interventions, uh, uh, for those staff members, uh, many of whom I'm sure would be more than willing to do that, but, um, that's my response, I guess.
Tom Kouliantis, Principal.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I would have said as well.
So it sounds like both of you guys are recommending to proceed. Is that what I'm hearing?
And Tom?
Tom Kouliantis, Principal.
I mean, I just, uh, as John said, the people we're bringing back were designed to come back mostly to fill supervision spots for us. Um, I just definitely would, um, I would be able to proceed in e-school without this group of people right now because we don't have the students in the building. If they're back, I would be working with my teams. I couldn't tell you exactly what they'd be doing, um, right now, but we would be working with our teams to put them in position to support our students. And as we've heard, um, we've got a lot of student needs that we're all kind of concerned about. Um, so it's a difficult position for me because I can't tell you exactly what it would be at this moment, other than a commitment to make sure that, um, everybody that we've got in our building is working to support students.
Are these our employees?
Yes.
So if we bring them back and, and we can only use them part-time, uh, can we control their hours?
We can.
They're, they were coming back, uh, part-time to begin with, I believe, correct, Bryant? Thirty-two hours?
Correct, they were coming back part-time, about thirty-two hours, and we can, you know, bring them back on a limited basis and then, and increase it then. You know, we're looking at November thirtieth, um, you know, that Monday. Um, you know, that's the week that, um, you know, we're looking at possibly, you know, trying to come back into school, um...
I mean, my, my preference would be to increase it as we need to, but, I mean, as I said, I want to be, I want to be ready when we're ready. And this, this allows us to at least have the infrastructure in place whenever we do pivot, correct?
That, that's true, Pat. That, that would be true. Whenever we do pivot, we would have the people in place. We wouldn't be subject to maybe people not being available, you know, to come back when we're ready for them to come back.
Even to hire them, we got to approve that, which means it's either got to be at a board meeting or a special meeting, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so the next board meeting's not until?
December seventh.
Right?
You know.
Yeah, we could start a contingent upon board approval, like, you know, we hire teachers in the summer, but, you know, the best way to do that is to try and line it up, of course.
So again, we could agree to hire these people and put it to the building's discretion with respect to how many hours these people have to work.
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
And then Tom and John would, would report out to us and, and let us know what that is. And they're very, as you already know, I mean, I'll just say this for the record, because some people are watching and may not know, John and Tom are very good at working with us, um, you know, on personnel issues, so, um, you know, and Pat, you've said, can we adjust their hours in the interim? Yes, we can. I mean, we've answered that question. You know, they're all coming back, this group's coming back all, no more than thirty-two hours, right? I think for all of them. So, um, you know, we have the ability to adjust them. Um, but we would have the infrastructure in place when we're ready to pivot.
You know, we could, we could look at, Pat, I mean, they were scheduled to come back in two days with the students coming in on, um, you know, Thursday for hybrid. Now, obviously, we're making some changes to this week. You know, if we look at November sixteenth as a start date, um, that would allow, I think, our buildings to put some pieces in place for them over the sixteenth that week, and then two days for Thanksgiving, and then we're ready, you know, really ready, you know, for students then coming back. You know, the hybrid model, um, the week of the thirtieth.
Well, though, what I'm thinking is I don't know that I would be even committing to that. I mean, like I said, I would, I would want you guys to, to, I'll call it scrutinize. I don't have a better word tonight, but I mean, manage their hours as we need to until we come back. It's November thirtieth, it's November thirtieth, but if it's December fifteenth, it's December fifteenth. I mean, you know, does that make sense? I mean...
So you, Pat, you're suggesting we keep the motion as it is?
I'm suggesting we approve to hire them, but the, the hour, the number of hours they work is managed by the buildings. And my guess is until they get back to school, it'd be less than thirty-two hours. But if we find great work for them to do that's going to help address our social emotional needs of the kids, then by all means, I mean, we should do it. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
I, I kind of go along with Lisa. I, I don't, I don't think, if I was paying for this out of my own pocket, which I guess I am as a taxpayer, I, I don't see how we can say, kid, you can't come back, but we're going to hire these people just to be ready. We, we just basically had a long discussion, and again, I respect Tom and, uh, I, I heard him. I don't think it's our job to tell the principals in the building to try to find these people work. That, that's my opinion. Uh, so that's, I, I, I think, because we are, again, I think we have to be clear. At the P and P meeting, we already approved some other people joining, assuming that we were going to have kids back in school. So we already have that tranche at the building, right? If I remember right, and now these are new ones, like Bryant talked about. So now we have another layer. And I guess, I, again, as much as I hate to say it, it, it just, it doesn't make sense to me to bring people on if kids aren't going to be there, uh, so...
Even, even though it could accelerate our ability to pivot to remote or a hybrid, right?
I, I think these are not necessar, we have a monitor, a library aide, another aide, a monitor, a mash aide, a monitor. These positions, again, there are people in the community, especially with restaurants being closed and things like that, we can fill these positions. In my opinion.
So, okay, so the request was going to be for a motion to approve these people as recommended. Do you have an alternate motion we can vote on?
No, we don't need to make a motion at all. We just move on. It's an agenda item. We don't, if there's no motion, doesn't, doesn't say we have to make a motion.
Well, we do have some replacements here on the side.
Well, I would, I would break it apart. If, if, if you're not going to move ahead with, um, voting any of them, though, I would pull out the number three, the ESP new hire for our certified nurse's assistant. So that, that's a position that we, we need, right?
We have that.
We need right now.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, we are, um, you know, we're, the sooner we can get that person in place is the sixteenth, but we, whether we're remote or hybrid, we need that person. We need, you know, we're doing a lot of work with, you know, staff and students, and we need that person.
Be in favor of that.
Let me, let me pose it this way. Is, is there anyone that wants to make, we're going to split item three out. Is there anyone that wants to make a motion for item one and two? Okay, uh, hearing done. Uh, then, uh, can we get a motion for, uh, support staff new hire, uh, under, uh, item A, Roman numeral three?
So moved. Second?
Okay, any further discussion on that particular one? Okay, Carol, can we have a roll call, please?
Groody?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Um, Pat, we have IASB resolutions here because we did discuss it in the P and P. Do you want it here or do we do this during the IASB?
You can, you can, let's do it here.
Let's just do it.
And let's keep it as brief as possible.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, let's get through this pretty quickly. I do have a, a little bit of additional information. I attended the meeting Thursday night. Um, and we've gotten some more comments, of course, from the, from the public. Um, just a bit of a clarification. So in the resolutions, the first eight resolutions listed are all included in a consent vote, assuming that the committee agrees to adopt them. If they suggest that they don't get adopted, they are not included unless the author of that resolution, uh, appeals to the, to the committee to get it, uh, discussed. So in which case, there are two items out of that consent vote, out of those new resolutions, uh, that will be up for, uh, discussion. And that is, yeah, um, resolution number two, which we've heard a lot about, the gun storage, um, resolution. And then another one that was actually mistitled. Uh, it's called pre-K teacher licensure. Actually, it's pre- Actually, it's pre-service or pre, it, it's supposed to be a, a student teacher, teacher licensure discussion. They've adjusted some wording on that and will be, you know, moving forward with a, a discussion and a, and a vote on that. So how these work, when you pull them out like that, after the committee's recommended that they do not adopt, it happens in two parts. The first part is the overall groups has to vote to bring it back to the table, basically. To, they have to vote to be able to vote on it. So the, the initial vote will be, do we want to discuss and vote for or against this resolution? Because it was already rejected by the committee. So both of those resolutions will come up for that initial vote to see whether we move forward. And then the subsequent vote will be a yea or nay towards the, towards the resolution. So, does that make sense?
Jim Batson, vice president.
That was something that I, I recalled, but I, I hadn't, I don't think I had commented on last time and made clear. There's really, you know, there was some additional conversation Thursday night on the topic. Nothing that we didn't already hash through last week during our committee meeting. The comments ranging from people very much in support of the, the resolution, that they feel that this is something that the, the school board association should be supporting, all the way to a number of people talking about this as gun control types of things, some second amendment types of concerns. So that it ran the gamut. And you can imagine, you know, that, that there was a lot of, Illinois is a pretty diverse state. And I mean that in many ways. And there's, there are a lot of rural areas where this would hit home very differently than the urban areas. That being said, the, the commentary was pretty mixed. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be taking a vote on, on whether to take a vote on that this coming Saturday. I will note that we, and I believe, Don, you had mentioned this, House Bill twenty-two fifty-four is a bill that's, that's going through. And I believe it may have been, I, I'm trying to clarify exactly where that is, but it's the bill that is basically mirrors what this is talking about, with the exception that it has the fourteen-year-old age limit instead of the eighteen-year-old age limit. And what the resolution is, is suggesting is they move the, the age limit for people, young people that could possibly gain access to, to guns to eighteen instead of fourteen. So this is something, and it's fairly new. It was, it had just gone through the house in, in July. I'm actually reaching out to somebody to find out a little more information on that, one of the co-sponsors of that bill. So hopefully, I might be able to get some additional feedback on that particular bill. But, you know, regardless of where you come down on this, we all want our kids to be safe. We all want, you know, we, we want to prevent suicides. We want to prevent school shootings as much as we can. I would encourage people out there that are very interested in this topic to go file a witness slip, you know, that get, get involved in directly with the, the legislation, not through a third party. And I'll also make one comment, any of these resolutions that we wind up voting for at the Illinois Association of School Boards, and I think Prentice made this clear last week, it, it's, we have no jurisdiction over any of this. This is just a recommendation for us to support. The legislators have to make laws. We don't make laws. The School Board Association certainly does make laws. So what this is, is it's just a, a recommendation to our association for those types of, of programs and, and policies and laws that they are going to advocate for in Springfield and, and in the various regional, local and state governments, and even in some cases at the federal level. So.
And Jim, now.
I'm a little, oh, can I just ask for clarification? So are you saying that there is no law right now, saying that if you're fourteen or under, the household has to have it?
I believe that has passed, and that has gone through the system. I'm just trying to find.
So there's a new piece of legislation that's being proposed that would raise it?
I could not find any legislation that was proposed to change that. I've looked, but I have not found it yet. So I'm, I'm reaching out to one of the co-sponsors to try to see if I can get some additional information on this law that seems to have been put into, into a place in, in July. And that was the fourteen and under law for this.
So that's new, okay.
It's fairly new, yeah, yeah.
Just, just remember, like any advocacy group, what IASB is going to do after all this is processed, if they have thirty-five resolutions, they're going to crunch that down to three or four or five. And that's what they're going to push in their legislative agenda, you know, at the end of the day. So what they're doing is they're basically seeking feedback on many things. And then they're going to continue to process those many things. And they will squeeze that list down. Kevin's very familiar with this because of his work that he does in Springfield. They're going to squeeze that list down to what they think is their three or four top priorities. And that's where, of, of that list, everything on the list, and that's, and that's what they're going to, that'll be their legislative agenda after it's all said and done. Because they, they can't push thirty-five things as their agenda. They don't have the time, they don't have the money, and they don't have the resources. And they also will not have the attention of the legislators on thirty-five issues, I think, as Kevin would agree, for sure. So.
I just wanted to, to make it clear that there's, there's multiple hurdles. This one has, even for the resolution, there's two, two votes that it has to pass for this resolution to even get on the agenda for the IASB. And then as Prentice says, it's, it's, it's just one part of their agenda. So I want to set really sick expectations that just because we vote and a lot of people vote yes on this or try to vote yes on this, because we might not even get that opportunity, that, that doesn't in any way create a law, create a bill, create, none of that. It's just giving permission or giving a, a direction to the, the association to advocate for that. So I just want to be clear that that's the, that's the process. There's a, regardless of how you come down.
Jim Batson, vice president.
So.
Jim Batson, vice president.
It, it's, and at, at, at the risk of asking this, this was the one that we seem to have the, the biggest concern with. I know we sort of took a straw poll the other day. Do we need to do that again? Is there, without getting into a lengthy discussion again here?
Yeah, I, I will reiterate my comments. I still think it's worth advocating for. I'd like to see us vote yes for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to pull it out and discuss it, hopefully get it to a place where it can be voted on and that we would be behind it.
Casey Rooney, school board.
And Jim, I recognize that, that this is challenging. There's a finite bucket of capital that IASB has, and this is a, a real hot-button issue. I think that our public in our district has made it clear that they support this. And, you know, with all the conversations we're having about concern about kids' mental health and emotional health, I can't help but support advocating for this. And I understand the realities of what that really means. It's, it's kind of a, there's not a lot of power behind it. I understand that. But I just feel as a parent and as a school board member that I, I have to support that.
Anybody else want to comment?
No, I can't.
I think I know what I, what I have. And, you know, hopefully we'll even get a chance to, to make that vote. So we'll see how that goes. I will let everyone know once that's completed so that we don't have to wait till next month for you to, to, to hear what the result is. But that'll be.
And just Jim, Jim, thank you so much for all you're doing on this, for how you're digging in and communicating so well with us and helping us to understand it. And just really, really appreciate your work.
Ditto.
Okay.
Greatly appreciated.
So that, anything other for PMP? Okay, that concludes our program and personnel committee. I turn it back over to Dr. Groody.
Thanks, Jim. All right, Facilities and Finance, Chairperson Huber. Kevin, you're on mute.
Thank you, Pat. Dan, you want to go over the levy, please?
Dan Stanley, business.
Yes.
As a reminder, this is our fourth, fifth, fourth, this is our fourth, fourth bite at the apple. So we spent a lot of time on this, a lot of education. So I think tonight's really, the purpose tonight is to approve, yes?
Yes, sir. So do you, do you see my, does everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, so twenty-twenty levy. So just as a reminder, you know, this is the fourth meeting we've had talking exactly about this particular levy with these particular numbers. We did over the summer, levy is part of the budget planning that we, we go through. But the last four meetings, including tonight, we've had discussion about this. A brief reminder that our levy is largely based on CPI, which is Consumer Price Index, and the change of which, the percentage change of which is essentially the rate of inflation that we are restricted by. And so you can see two-point-three percent is the number for twenty-twenty. This is lagged, so it's, you know, it's a year behind in data. So the, you know, the twenty-twenty-one number is likely going to be a fair amount lower than that. Our history for our property tax extension, again, we've shown this before. You know, it, it's had some ups and downs over the years. Some of that is because of, you know, tax levy decisions by the board at that time. Some of it has to do with debt, debt payment and structure. But the last few years, you can see, is pretty, pretty consistent there. We had this on a presentation before that in twenty-fourteen, there was a decision by the board to lower the tax levy. And so that was lowered by, you can see that over two million, to call it two-point-three million in twenty-fourteen. And then the way, because the way the math works and the law and the formula works, a million of that, about one-point-one million carries over and increases with inflation each year in perpetuity. And so that is, that continues to be there. So that's already a built-in, I guess, savings that's already there based on action. So just trying to show and highlight, like, the, a lot of the property tax system that we are under, a one-time decision has long-term ramifications both ways. Unfortunately, we don't have the flexibility really to make a temporary decision for one year and then kind of go back. You don't have that flexibility under the law. Here's the history of our EAV, which is our equalized assessed value. This is what we would call our tax base in the district. You know, it had definitely had its dips in the recession time, but since then has recovered a fair, a lot. And next year, the projection is for our EAV to be flat. So that's built into our estimations. And then new properties, so this is the value of new properties coming on. This could be companies, but most likely it's usually people doing renovations to their houses. That's usually the biggest part of new property. So they're doing an addition or renovating something. And so that's been averaged around fourteen million, and that's the estimate that we're working under based on data from the county. And so we have a formula that calculates what I'm anticipating our extension is going to be is eighty-two-point-three million. That's the two-point-three CPI that I talked about, plus a point-four-six, that's fourteen million. That's the fourteen million, and for a total increase of two-point-seven-six. Now, what this means is that for existing properties, your average increase will be two-point-three percent relative to the change in assessments. So meaning, if you remember, I said EAVs being flat, being zero. If your individual property assessment changed by zero percent, then your taxes would go up. The portion for District One Twenty-eight would go up two-point-three percent. If your assessment from between this year and last year went down, your taxes would go up by less than two-point-three, or they could be flat or down, depending on how much your, your, your assessment changed. If your assessment changed by more than zero, so if it went up, your taxes would go up by more than the two-point-three percent. So it's, it's just two-point-three percent spread out over the whole. And then really, this is a lot of numbers here, but if you just think the first column is what our extension was, that was the money we were approved to get last year. The middle column is what I'm estimating we're actually going to get. And then the final column is, is actually what we are levying, those dollars and those funds. So eighty-two-point-seven-seven-six-three-oh-six million, or eighty-two million seven-hundred-seventy-six-thousand-three-hundred-six dollars, excuse me, would be our levy. That is a three-point-one, three-point-one percent increase over last year. However, I think we're actually only going to get two-point-seven-six percent. And that leaves us a cushion of just under three-hundred thousand. And, you know, normally, I, I think, be, because we've been doing this pretty closely the last few years, I would, in a normal year, I'd probably suggest a closer number to two-point-seven-six. But again, with the pandemic, and I think the increased likelihood of people assessing, challenging their assessments is much higher this year than I've, than I've seen in previous years. So I feel more comfortable with that three-point-one. And that's really, that's the information I have for you. So a little bit brief, you know, but we've been talking about this a fair amount, and the documents are, you know, in, in your packet as well. So that's what I got.
Good overview. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. I think we are probably looking for a motion to adopt the certificate of twenty-twenty tax levy and accompanying resolutions as presented.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Casey. We have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, other comments talking about it? Dan, you've done a great job. Thank you for doing this. I, I know it's, it's never easy. So, thank you. Any comments? All right, Carol, you want to call?
Dan, as always, for your hard work.
My pleasure, my pleasure. This is, this is, there's a lot of important things you do. I, I would strongly argue, not just because I'm a finance guy, this is securing the largest source of revenue for the district. So this helps us literally do the things that we're all talking about doing. So it's a very important decision.
You do an amazing job of explaining it so that hopefully the public can understand it and, and we can understand it as well, and everyone can kind of wrap their arms around it, something this important, and I appreciate that.
Oh, thank you. It's kind.
All right, Carol.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Groody.
Hi.
Good, all right. So now we get to talk about getting rid of our, finally, getting rid of nine-thirty-three West Park Avenue. Finally, Dan. You're, you're, you're not teasing us, are you?
That was a goal before I retired, Kevin. Take that building down, right?
Oh, my gosh, Dan, you're not teasing us here, all right? You're not gonna?
Not teasing. Things sound simple to say, just take down a house. It's not always that simple. So we want to be careful and do things properly. So Mark has coordinated for us to do exactly that. I'll turn it over to Mark for the details.
Mark Koopman, B and G.
Okay, thank you, Dan. We had three contractors show up for our pre-bid meeting. We received three bids. So looking for, the administration is looking to recommend that the board approve a bid from Fowler Enterprises LLC out of Elgin, Illinois, in the amount of thirty-four thousand six-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
And Mark, that has a contingency in there of how much?
It has a contingency in it for fifteen thousand.
Okay, so, you know, if by some miracle, we don't incur that, which, we probably will, just so you know, that's kind of how it works, but we could get fifteen thousand back if we're done. And no, no other bad unforeseen circumstances.
Okay, questions of Mark and Dan on the removal of nine-thirty-three Park Avenue?
Yes, when's it coming down?
Well, we still, we have to get a permit from the village. So once you approve it, I can move forward with the permit of the village. And we're filing for the abatement. That's a couple-week process, get that permit. So it's all coming together. The power's already been shut off to the building. They cut the power last week. And I put in a couple of months ago to have the gas line, but that takes a I.D.A. permit, so.
Realistically, realistically, what do you think?
Sometime December, realistically.
Thank you.
Other questions of Mark and Dan? All right, seeing that we have a motion to approve the bid from Fowler Enterprises to remove nine-thirty-three West Park Avenue. All right, seeing that I may have a motion to approve the bid from Fowler Enterprises to remove 933 West Park Avenue in the amount of $34,650.
So moved.
Thanks, Karen. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Other comments? All right, Carol.
Huber.
Yes.
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Groody.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
All right, any other?
Do you want to have, have us bold that yes in the minutes, like a bold and underline? Yes.
Yes, please. All right, any other for Facilities and Finance? All right, back to Dr. Rudy. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. No IASB now, right, Jim?
I, I got one more thing I was going to mention.
Okay.
So, um, for those of you that, the meeting I'm doing is this coming Saturday. That's normally at the same time as our Triple I conference, the joint conference. That conference obviously isn't exist, isn't going on this year, but they are holding a, what they're calling a virtual summit. This is IASB by, by itself is holding a virtual summit. It's on Friday, November 20th, so a week from Friday, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Uh, it's, it's just, it's got two keynotes. It's got some other speakers. My, my favorite is, uh, the, the opening keynote is Baratunde Thurston. And if you haven't heard him or, or heard any of his stuff, uh, interesting guy, he's talking on the, uh, how to deconstruct racism, one headline at a time. He's a very funny man and very, uh, interesting to hear speak. I follow him on a couple of things. So, um, it's, it might be something worth, um, uh, spending some time on that Friday watching. I think it's a relatively minimal cost, but, uh, Carol can probably still get some folks, uh, signed up for that if you care to join. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Is that in addition to what we've already, like, if we've already signed up to go, do we go to, can we go to that?
Yeah, that's,
Yeah, that's all part of it.
Okay, uh, no seat all. Um, so can I have a motion to convene an executive session? Tonight's topic, employment of an employee. It's five ILCS 120 slash 2C1.
Can I interject just one tiny foundation update?
Sure.
Um, it'll only take one minute. Um, just want to be sure that everybody is aware, um, we can't have the big event this year. Um, that is the, uh, District 128 Foundation for Learning's largest fundraising event. Um, so that, uh, supports our Students in Need Fund as well as, um, grants for teachers, innovation grants. Um, in, uh, in lieu of that, um, there is going to be a wind down for the holidays fundraiser on Friday, November 20th at five, it's, uh, 7:30. There's a link to make purchases tonight that are all wine and chocolate related that will support the foundation. Uh, monetary donations will still be accepted after tonight, but if you want to bid, uh, if you want to purchase any of the wine and chocolate packages that will support the Foundation for Learning, um, tonight is the night. And you can find that link on the D128 Foundation for Learning, uh, website that can be accessed from the D128 site.
Okay, great. Thanks, Lisa. It looks like a nice event, actually. Okay, uh, is there a motion to convene executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all right, discussion, roll call?
Lundstedt.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Groody. Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. All right, so we'll go to the, uh, closed session on the other Zoom link. And then again, Bryant, just to confirm, we'll come back on this link, correct? Okay.